Welcome, it's January 13th. We are at the brand-new Murfreesboro Airport, the new terminal that has been recently constructed. So we're in the new community room and coming to you live. We're set up in here where it's just like we're in the council chamber. Would want to start by saying that under the governor's executive order, we are doing, we have, I think Ms. Madeline Skels Harris is participating via Zoom, and we have several other people who are participating via Zoom. We are all socially distanced, so if you see us not having a mask, we're all six feet away, and everyone in the staff is six feet away. If you're not six feet away, scoot over a little bit. So, want to start by, the city council has come into session and want to ask Ken Halliburton to call the planning commission to order.
We will go ahead and call the planning commission to order for this joint meeting as we have a quorum.
All right, if you will, bow your heads. Father, I thank you for this chance that we get together, for the chance that we can start a new year, and with every new year, we get to think of things that are in the future. We don't have to dwell in things in the past. So, help us look forward, give us guidance, give us wisdom, let us be thankful for the city that we live in, and the discussions that we get to have with one another, that we don't have to worry about political affiliations, all those things, we just get to worry about what's best for our community. Father, we love you and we praise you. Amen. And Rick has got a flag right here, so we're going to pledge allegiance to this flag. Have that on his list, I guarantee you, next time you come out here, Chad will have an American flag in here. All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to rearrange the schedule just a little bit. I feel like we end up doing this to Erin every time that she's going to present financial information. So, we're going to go ahead and start with the sanitary sewer allocation report, and then we're going to go into the discussion of land use, so we can make sure that we get the topics accomplished while we're here. We'll try to keep this to, I'm hoping, two hours if we can, but if it goes longer, if you need to leave, by all means, you can leave. But this is an important discussion today. So Darren, we're going to turn it over to you and your PowerPoint.
Great, thank you. Lot of information to cover today, and I've tried to do that in the minimal amount of slides. I used this joke at the planning commission training session, we're looking at a flush wrapped in a season inside a rainstorm. That's Churchill's comment regarding dealing with Russia, so it's kind of the same kind of situation in dealing with trying to derive how much capacity we have here in our sewer system. Lot of assumptions have to be made. So I'm going to go through some of that and give you some of the basic tenets first. I can, so the assets, we all know that we have a WRF, that's our Water Resource Recovery Facility, commonly referred to as our bucket. This is where everything discharges to, this has a finite capacity, and it's permitted by the Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation. We have a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, an NPDES permit, that we can discharge so much mass of pollution into the West Forkstones River. Outside the fence, we have pump stations, pipes, manholes, these are the pipes or the straws, if you will, that flow into the bucket. So there's some capacity issues in that regard as well. So we're trying to look at both of these scenarios to some degree. Just reviewing the separate sewer system, this is something we went back with and looked at, let me see, do I need to?
If you don't mind, if you're on Zoom, if you'll mute your microphone if you're participating from Zoom, and then if you want to speak, we'll just unmute, please.
But this is something that we kind of went through with the stakeholders when we were talking about our sewer allocation ordinance, that, so these are the pipes, right? It conveys the raw sewage, and it's, they're expandable, they're very expensive to expand. Again, the treatment facility, our WRF, it's expandable and expensive. We did spend about $40 million in 2017 to upgrade the plant. The thing that's not expandable is our receiving stream, the West Forkstones River that assimilates the discharge from the plant. That river is the size that that river is, there's nothing we can necessarily do about that. This is a hydrograph, and so just think of this, the x-axis is time, and those blue, that blue graph is flow. So you can see there's, this isn't, the flows that come to the plant is not a nice straight line all the time, we're affected by rain. And so we look at kind of a dry flow, that's the green dashed line, and then we look at wet weather flow, the winter months typically. Right now, nothing's growing, the soil, for the most part, is saturated, there's no evapotranspiration, the plants aren't pulling water out of the soil. So a three-inch rain event in January is a, our system reacts a whole lot differently to that than a three-inch rain event, say, in the middle of July. The soil and the plant life just sucks that water straight up, and you can have another two-inch rain event the next day and almost not even notice it, but here in the winter, you have a three-inch with a two-inch rain event, the system gets pretty hammered. So, we're looking, the way we want to approach this, the flows, so we're looking at that condition, that winter condition, which is about 2.8 times the average, so that equals about 500 gallons per new connection. So the connection is, what is a connection? A connection's an apartment, it's a townhome, it's a single-family home, commercial establishment, food service, retail shop. We haven't gone into the level of resolving it to all those different uses, we're just saying, hey, we have this many, we have 70, roughly, here at the bottom, 75,000 connections. Almost 50,000 of those are, we'll call it residential, commercial, retail, food service. 25,000, just over 25,000 of those connections are apartments. We did go in and look at those as a, as an independent class to the overall connection. So that's about 34% of total is apartment connections, right now. This is our as-is. So this just kind of gives you some logic as to how we approached, we're talking connections. This is our system, and it's color-coded, and you kind of have this in front of you, this is a hard copy, maybe a little bit different, a hard copy you have, but everything has to go through three main pumping stations. So we've got the main lift station that is right by our Water Resource Recovery Facility, that's the area in yellow. We've got overall creek pump station, that's the area that flows to that is in the green. And then we've got the Southwest Regional Pump Station, that was completed about four years ago. Remember the old Fort Golf Course screw station that was there? That got abandoned, this took its place and handled all this flow from basically the south side of town. So it's relatively new. How does this look like? And I've got this on your, down in your lower left-hand corner of your exhibit as well. This is kind of how everything, the branches and everything upstream flows to downstream. So it's kind of our system configuration as-is. So I'm going to use the term as-is, which means current, what does our system look like today? I'm going to use another term, it's called 2B, what is our, what are our plans for expanding our system and some of the stuff we already have programmed into our five-year capital improvement plan? So the as-is versus a 2B condition. So you can see, this is, everything runs through these, those three main pump stations that I just showed you. So this is really kind of a summary. We have about 123,000 system connection capacity. Again, that's 75,000 current connections. That means we've got 48,000 roughly that's available. And we did go through and looked at since 2015, and that was just kind of a year we determined, you know, a five-year-old plans that have been approved since 2015, how many committed or future connections have, do we think, have been approved on paper, right? That we need to book, book those committed connections, that's roughly 8,300. So that gets us down to 39,731 total uncommitted available connections. Okay? Now, I'll go through how this kind of, this kind of looks. Note the legend down here in the bottom right-hand corner. So I've tried to color-code these, where red is available connections less than 1,500, yellow is between 1,500 and 3,000, light green is between 3 and 4, and dark green is greater than 4,000 connections. So really, just, you know, maybe not focus so much on the numbers, just maybe look at the colors when I bring this up. Oh, and I want to bring up this collection system rule. When you see these numbers, we can rob upstream capacity and give it to our downstream capacity, can't do the reverse. If it's downstream, we can't take, hey, we've got 5,000 connections downstream, we can't take 1,000 connections and give that to an upstream basin. We can do the opposite, we can take an upstream basin, if it's got 5,000 connections, we can say, well, we're going to limit it to 4,000, and we'll give that extra 1,000 to a downstream component. So there's some flexibility here, these numbers are tied to a model, a spreadsheet that I've used, and so, as of, this is good through November of 2020, we're going to have to be updating this as we go. And if we approve things, or as things get connected, these numbers are ultimately going to have to, you know, they're going to change. I don't think they're going to change drastically, but they will change over time. So overall creek, you can see, we've got some red there, when you look at the actual available uncommitted connections. Southwest Regional, I'm going to, I didn't bring up my laser pointer, did I? These down here, these are negative numbers, we're obviously not in a negative, we're still handling the County Farm Road, this is the Joby Jackson area, you can kind of see the 12A and the 14 is on your, kind of the bottom of your exhibit. The model showed us that we're in a negative based on committed numbers or future connections, but that, I'll go over that, that pump station can be upgraded, so I'm not too worried about it. You can see here, we've got some green and some yellow, and then again, some yellow, some red, and some light green here. So, not in terrible shape, the good news is, is we're not upside down. We haven't necessarily, maybe, in 12A and 14, the model says we are, I don't, we can do some upgrades to fix that, but we haven't overcommitted anywhere to where we're saying, hey, there's more connections in this basin that we've approved than our system can handle. So that's the good news. And, you know, to have 30, basically a third of your capacity remaining, that's pretty good news as well. This is, again, just kind of a summary, 48,000 minus the 8,300. These four numbers up here equal that 39,371, so you can kind of see how that's proportioned if you look at your map. The diagram helps me, just because, no.
So Darren, the OV is overall, SWF is the southwest, MA is?
Is the main lift station, yes, sir.
What's the fourth one?
Well, this is Thompson Lane, I'm sorry, that's Thompson Lane Pump Station. DL is DeJardet Lane, and OA is the Oakland Pump Station. And we just have those, we did just upgrade the Oakland Pump Station. DeJardet Lane is about 15, 20 years old, Thompson Lane's older than that. We do have a plan for this particular area, too, that I'll show you in the 2B condition. But yeah, that's a good question, sorry I didn't explain those. We just have monitors there, that's just, those pumps, you can kind of see from the diagram that you ultimately get to, the pumps are somewhat the constraints when you get to a large pump station, and those can be upgraded. So, 8295 is the committed number, and I want to go over that breakout a little bit. This is how we came to that, at that number. These are the basins, for the diagram, site plans, preliminary plats, apartments, and total. So, everything totals out at almost 8,300. 17% of that is apartments, 67% preliminary plat, 16% site plans. And you can kind of see, the majority of this, 62% of that total is in the Salem Highway Corridor, the overall creek, the overall creek basin. So the majority, that's in our higher-growth area, right, the west side of the interstate, where a lot of things are moving. Makes sense that the majority of our outstanding committed sewer connections are in the west of the interstate where we're going quicker. So I'm going to talk about 2B, we're going to talk about going to one of four pump stations. This is another pump station that we're talking about, a future Northeast Regional, I've talked to you all about it, we've approved the design, the design contract, it's going to kind of parallel or correspond with the construction of Cherry Lane. It's going to free up some capacity on the east side of Memorial and north of, say, Clark Boulevard, that quadrant of the city. So, that's going to cost $38.9 million. That has been programmed in our five-year CIP, that can be funded through a combination of cash reserves. We've actually got enough cash reserves to pay for this using just cash, we can use a combination of cash reserves and debt service. But this is in our five-year CIP, and this has been, it's programmed into our rate design, it's programmed into our cost of service. So this is, this is nothing new, you know, we weren't surprised, let's just put it this way, there's not a big number that all of a sudden we saw, hey, we've got a $20 million project we didn't know about. So we've got a handle on all of this, which is, again, good news. Northeast Regional, that's where we're actually going to be taking this off of the Thompson Lane Station, and these are, the Northeast and the Southwest and overall creek, those can be considered end runs. What those do is they take a certain existing capacity off of a large pipe, and we do an end run and pump it straight to the WRF. What that does, it frees more capacity up in that pipe that we're eliminating it from. And so we're just, again, this is how you just do a business case, it's more cost-effective to put in a pump and do an end run than to come in through the middle of town and in large pipelines. So, 2B condition, I guess I can jump to the bottom, same number of committed future connections, same current connections, but we bump about, let me see, did I put that? Yeah, we bump at 18,270, we increase it to, was it 30, it was 30, roughly 40,000, we're getting it up to 58,000. That gives us about an 18,000 connection increase, that's a 15% increase if we spend that roughly $40 million.
Darren, do you mind if we ask questions?
Sure.
How many are we averaging per year?
We're averaging probably around 3,000 per year, somewhere in that range, between 3,000 and 3,500 roughly. So, again, these are the numbers, I don't go through all the branch lines, but you can see there's, we've got positive numbers now down here, and again, that County Farm can be upgraded even more. The thing about it, though, is when you upgrade the downstream stuff, or the upstream stuff, it does eat up that capacity downstream, so there's a ripple effect that happens. But, lot more yellow, a lot more light and dark green here. Overall creek, you can see, goes up with that pump station upgrade, gets up to 15,000 connections. So that's the big bump. The Northeast Regional is going to get us closer to 7,000, so that roughly is the 18,000 increase, is because we upgrade overall creek for more capacity and we add the Northeast Regional. So that's basically the bulk of it. I'm just bringing up the as-is again, just to kind of, you know, compare and contrast. That's the as-is, and this is the 2B. So, and this is going to kind of goes with your slides, so I'm going to go through this fairly quickly, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time because you've kind of got the detail in front of you, but I want to talk about the branches. So this is the overall creek pump station branch, that's what this looks like, that should be your first map behind the overall map. So this is, you can see that as-is 2B, that corner up in the top, where we go from an as-is condition of around 3,800 connections versus the 15,000. And I kind of go through, and you can kind of see, this really breaks down what the available connections are, what the committed connections, what the remaining connections are, gives you some developable acreage in that basin, and then if you do apply a uniform density, which I'm not advocating that you have to apply a uniform density across the remaining acreage, but if you just did the math, that's what the, that's what the uniform density would have to be to equal the total units. But you can see, it just kind of shows you the red to green movement with that upgrade. So this is probably the most drastic change in the system that we'll see. Looking at the main pump station, Thompson Lane, right now, now, I will note down here at the bottom, I just floated in, we do have some hotspots, this red outline at the bottom, that's the area that not too long ago, we came in and said, hey, we really have some localized constraints in this particular area that we need to be very, very conscientious of what we approve in that area, because we have limited capacity. So it, we're just saying, hey, if there's a project that comes in in one of these hotspot areas, we need, you need to consult with the water resources, and we need to take a real strong look at what, whether we have the capacity to serve it or not. So, I would say that from the standpoint of this overall thing, there's just going to be certain, I mean, we're looking at the pipes that are at the, basically, the downstream run of this basin. Upstream, there's going to be potential constraints, pipe size limitations and so forth. So we're always going to be looking at that. This is a very kind of global 30,000-foot, maybe 10,000-foot picture of where our system is. So again, the 2B, we're going to get it up to, closer to 20,000 here, that's when we add the Northeast Regional Pump Station, MF02, 03, and 10, those, you know, you can see, some of those just don't, they don't change because there's no system upgrades proposed. So that's where the, that's where the proposed Northeast Regional would go, it's going to be real close to our water plant. Southwest, again, this one was, the Southwest Pump Station's only about five years old, so that's a pretty, that was, again, probably about a $15 million project when you added in the Forest Main. We do have several hotspots here in those basins, those connections don't change because those upgrades were made a few years ago. The County Farm Road Pump Station can be upgraded, that's going to get us into a positive number, but we're still somewhat limited on connections out there, and we've known that. But everywhere else, we kind of go, and we do go from a light green to a yellow in 12 and in 11A, because again, when we take the capacity here and give, put more units in in 14 and 12, we have to take them away from 12 and 11. And again, that's just that ripple effect. Last one is MF01, that doesn't change, there's about 13,700 units here, and you can kind of just see, the as-is versus the 2B, those numbers are constant. Now again, we can take from upstream and give it to downstream, so those numbers can change, so it's flexible. These aren't just stamped in concrete, the model is fluid. So the key takeaways, overall creek pump station is a priority, we've got that on the books, we've got that design done, we're actively getting, about to start land acquisition for easements, and we'll have that thing under construction pretty quickly. We're just mirroring, the nicest part about that is, is that we're just mirroring the existing pump station on the site that we've already got. We do have to run a new Forest Main, a larger pipe through some property, it'll take a couple of years to construct. The County Farm Pump Station needs to be monitored more closely, I think it has more capacity than the model's indicating, but again, we've just got our eye on that ball. Northeast Regional Pump Station is intended to free up more capacity on the Sinking Creek Interceptor, which is what serves MTSU, so that's, again, an improvement we have programmed. We do have wet weather capacity upgrades at the WRF. Right now, I think we're marginal, and I say this at the end, we may be marginal, meeting our NPDS permit limits in the future in the 2B condition. We have to do some upgrades to the plant to allow those rain events, those high-flow events, to actually get through the plant. The thing about those high-flow events is, you're just trying to pump a lot of water through it, you've pretty much already treated the sewer, and of course, we spend anywhere from $3 to $5 million a year on our sanitary sewer rehab projects to try to eliminate groundwater and rainwater getting into the collection system. So, again, this, those connection numbers can go up as our rehab efforts eliminate superfluous water or extraneous water. That's why an annual update is a good, you know, we just need to do this every year to see where we're at. How effective was our rehab? What upgrades have we made? What connections were made? What commitments were made? You know, you see the deal.
Darren, what about areas that are outside of that? So this shows areas that we have.
Right.
What about areas that we were annexed?
We have not, we have not, right now, programmed in any future annexed properties.
Okay.
Again, as those come in, they will have to be plugged into, and that's the next step, that water resources and planning, we have to, every planning commission meeting or every council meeting that something's approved, we need to update this map. And if land is added to the city limits and to, and our sewer system is extended into greenfield areas, we need to add that acreage and add those committed connections to it. And so we are continuously working to, to work with our NPDS permit to get increased limits. Again, I think, I think we're in, we're in better shape than I thought, quite honestly, but I still need to advocate, you know, getting those permits increased, or those limits increased, because at some point, we will, phosphorus and nutrients are kind of the limiting factor right now, and I've got to work with TDEC to try to convince them that the West Fork can handle more nutrients. Nutrients used to be a good thing, now nutrients aren't so good, at least in the regulator's perspective. And annual reports should become more refined each year, and so we can start trending things, and we'll start, this is just one snapshot right now, and it's our first snapshot. Once we get future snapshots, obviously, then you can start trending things and seeing, start extrapolating and interpolating between points. And again, I, one of the things that, I didn't put it on here, I should have, maybe I left it off, a lot of the capacity is not necessarily in those new areas of growth, a lot of the capacity, when you go back and you kind of look at the maps, a lot of that capacity is inside, you know, more centralized to the city. So just when I say we have 39,000... So just when I say we have 39,000 units of capacity, that doesn't mean we can extend the system out and capture a new 39,000 units in Greenfield area. A lot of that 39,000 is internal and centralized to areas that would have to be redeveloped to consume that capacity. If that makes sense. And you just have to, again, that's why we brought the maps. That's why we tried to, I guess, geospatially give you the reference of where the capacity is based on a location. So that's really it. That's we've developed the model and we've got plans to expand the capacity. But we're going to keep our eye on the ball and what's been committed and what's been developed and what's been connected. And we've got a great new tool, I believe.
All right. Could you look at the map and I just don't know what's, why is Bridge Avenue that little hole in the map? What is that? What's happening?
You talking about this map here?
Our first, our open map, our full map, there's a Bridge Avenue there. I just wondered why.
Can't, I do not know.
It's an area that doesn't flow into a sewer flow monitor. It gets pumped directly to the plant.
Oh, okay. Does it go through the southwest? Yeah. So that's just an area that actually, so it goes straight to the Southwest Pump Station and our flow monitor is just upstream of the pump station. So it going directly to it, it's not physically, we don't really measure that flow. So I guess it is just a little island. And so I should probably say this. I'm hoping this is plus or minus 10% on the numbers I'm giving you. Because this is, this is the first pass at it and, you know, I think we've done a ton of help from planning, ton of help from GIS, ton of help from water resource engineering. I did not do this single-handedly. Ton of work by a lot of folks that helped us pull this together. But it is, it's somewhat, we're first pass at it and obviously over time we'll refine it. I think we'll get tighter and tighter and more resolved as we go forward. But this is just trying to give a, you know, just our best estimate at this time.
All right. Thank you, Darren. Any questions for Darren? Okay, we're going to turn this over. Craig, pardon?
I've got a real quick one. Mr. Gore, the total plant capacity, the 123,000 or whatever that number is, where's that number come from?
I'm sorry to say that one more time.
The total plant capacity, the 123,000, is that discharge capacity? Where does that come from?
Yes, the 123,000. If you take that and multiply, divide that by roughly 500 gallons, that's that 60. So you have to understand, I'm using, the plant has two capacities. Plant has a dry weather capacity and then the plant has a wet weather capacity. And how I looked at the collection system component, so if you look up at the top corner, let's see where, oh, no, I'm sorry. Let me go back here. You don't have that exhibit. Share. You want to look at the as-is? So that 62.6 million, make sure if I, let me do my math here and make sure that this works. That 122. If you take that 122,5994 and you multiply that by 500 gallons per day, per connection, that gives you that, almost that 62 million gallons a day. The dry weather capacity, if you get down to here, is 21.4. So we are rated for 24 MGD at the plant from a, if we hit our concentration levels and at 24 million gallons a day, that's the amount of mass that we're allowed to put in the river. We have some leeway there because we have our reuse system. Our reuse system is putting out, for every four gallons that comes into the plant, we're putting three gallons in the river and we're putting one gallon out on the land. So we're really kind of operating at roughly 75 to 80% of, so that 21.4 really becomes what goes into the river, 75 for 80% of that. So that's where I'm saying on dry weather, we're in good shape. The wet weather, hydraulically, we've got to make some upgrades to get that flow through the plant. I don't know, does that make sense to some degree? And I will say this, and this is something that I don't want to, because this is when we get beat up the most. You see here, even though I'm looking at 2.8 times the dry average to come up with this 500 gallons per new connection, you can see there's some spikes, some peaks that go over that. There are certain rain events, just like when we have flooding. I tell people all the time, when you see a creek and the water comes out of the banks of the creek, nature did not design that creek to handle that much water. It's going to overflow. Similarly, there's just going to be certain times and months for weather events that our sewer system is going to get inundated. And we're going to have overflows. I mean, it's not if, it's just when. And you try to, again, use your best engineering judgment to avoid that. But you cannot design your system around, if you look at this, around that type of rain event. If you tried to design it around that, it would be like putting in 200-year storm drains in a subdivisions that you would use once every couple, I mean, you just can't do it. It just doesn't make good business sense. You just couldn't afford it.
Darren, could you share that PowerPoint? There's a lot to chew on in what you presented us. And I think a lot of it is getting educated as to what's happening and what are the decisions that will be made going forward. And I feel, share that PowerPoint because the as-is model and the 2B model, I'd like to look at a little bit more detail.
Absolutely. It's yours. I will email it. I didn't want to email it before I presented it because I didn't want it to be confusing. I tried to just limit what we sent out here on the maps. But this is absolutely yours to take and chew on and question me as long as you like.
Can I ask you a budget-type question?
Yes, sir.
So if we've got X number of capacity, you know, we, there's been a point where we have expanded capacity in the past at the plant. And obviously, there's going to be a time that we have to do that in the future. You said we already, we've already started saving for the $20 million upgrade piece. What, who pays for, do the rate payers?
Yes.
Pay for the upgrades? Do they also pay for the capacity number?
Yes.
And so when you have built your rates and your models for your rates, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if we burn that capacity faster than what you, there had to be a model on the front end of that, right? To build your rate. Is that right?
Yes.
And so we say, well, this particular upgrade is going to last us 25 years, for example.
Right.
And so you build your rate based on that. Is that right?
Yes.
So if we burn that in 15 years instead of 25 years, what happens?
Well.
You've got to see that coming and increase rates a lot.
Right. Well, so we have, for lack of a better term, we have an impact. We call it our connection fee. It's a system development charge. It's a capacity buy-in fee. So that $2,550 fee that people pay to make a new connection, that comes in as a revenue and out as an expense. We dump that straight into a reserve bucket. That's why we've got, when I say we can fund all these things with cash, all of the growth that has occurred up to this point, we have 50 million of undesignated cash reserves that we could spend 80% of that and fund this. So we do look at that from a cost of service perspective. We look at our asset, we look at it every other year. We have the cost of service study done and we determine what is the equity buy-in. Like you're buying shares. What's the equity buy-in to get into the system? And we need to adjust that. And we do the pro formas, right? We see, we plug in our five-year CIP, we show what our future capital improvements needs are. And then we have to say, how much of this is going to get funded by rates? By your monthly bills that people pay and how much of this is going to get funded through reserves and debt service? You know, if we fund it through debt service, that comes back, right? And Craig's done a good job. If we go get a big loan, we've got to make that payment. That needs to go, effectively is being funded by rate.
Yeah.
Rates, rate revenue. So that whole combination, we look at that every other year. Now, we haven't changed our buy-in, our equity buy-in number for seven or eight years.
Did you do that after we talked about impact fees for the city?
No, 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 we haven't because we're continuing to grow our reserve, our reserve revenue, our working reserve revenue. We're growing at about $6 million a year. And that's funding and funding a lot of projects. Now, it's not funding $40 million, but it has grown to the point where we can fund it that way without changing that 2550. And that gets, you know how that goes. There's a lot of judgment in there and I try to relay that to the board and the council.
The only reason I say you have to increase rates a lot was just if you, you know, if you didn't catch it until you're five years out, then you got to really step that number up to catch up 15 years and five, right?
And that's why we try to do a, if I do have to raise rates to cover stuff, I try to do that incrementally over like a five-year timeline. Instead of, hey, we're not doing anything, not doing anything, boom, we got to have a 25% rate increase. I mean, rather do 5% per year for five years versus a big jump.
That 20, the $2,300 for a tap fee, that does not include if you're in a special assessment district.
That does not. You're correct. There's more on, overall creek, there's another $1,000 you pay on top of that. So it's 3,550. And that goes back to pay for the overall creek interceptor. You know, we spent, and I do that report every year too. We've recovered of all the special assessments that we've put out there, we've recovered about half of what we've expended.
Because the average water and sewer tap fee is $4,150 is what every single family unit, if you're building a home in Murfreesboro, you're paying $4,100 before you're going to get a water tap set. So if you multiply that 4,100 times, how many permits did we pull last year, Sam? So you can do the math on that. 2,500 times 4,150, you know, we got 10 million bucks just off of single-family permits last year. And that does not include commercial projects where that tap fee is much higher than a single-family permit. So I think it's important as we talk about, growth doesn't pay for itself. In this case, with the water and sewer system, a lot of our capital that we have is being funded by just people pulling permits. So that's just one year, $10 million.
We budget somewhere, I think we're around eight million budgeted for new taps. And sometimes, again, it's growth. So it's, and that's why it's revenue and expense. So if we get 6 million, well, we just put 6 million in reserves. If we get 10 million, then we put, so it's just an in and an out, so to speak.
So let's move, if y'all don't care. I mean, I think what Craig is prepared, really with the Planning Commission being here, there's one question that the council needs to answer first. And if the council answers that question to the negative, then it's going to be a short meeting. If it's not, then that's where the Planning Commission and the council need to start discussing, you know, what our vision is in the next many years. So Craig, I'll turn it over to you. I don't think your microphone's on, Craig.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So transitioning into discussion on land use and development. You'll notice there are some elements that are required in any kind of decision that's brought forward. And what you just heard is one of those elements. So the fear is always when you present something as complex as sewer allocation, that kind of, it looks like that's the decision point that you have. And we don't want the Planning Commission to not understand that there are factors. There's lots of other factors that are involved in any type of land use planning. But sewer allocation is important because it is, it's a hard stop, more or less, than some, much harder than some of the other ones. We just have so much capacity that we have in the system or that we can develop into the system. And so that's why it was important to go through what we've just went through with Darren. And as we get through it, if there's any additional questions, I'm sure Darren can talk about how we can integrate that in. But what we developed is some questions that is our discussion points. Get that one more time. Discussion points, or as the joint meeting goes along to talk about, and a few touch points to kind of lead the discussion. You'll see sewer allocation, which we talked about. We've got, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Density, the vision, both the council and so the Planning Commission staff understand that. Annexation and where we're heading and the direction that staff needs to have as we go forward and bring things to the Planning Commission and to the council. So we'll jump into first topics of discussion, allocation. And the topic becomes pretty quickly is whether we have in our allocation that we've adopted right now, which is still valid and so within what Darren just presented to you, is that a hard and fast rule? Or do we look at projects as they come in and understand that there are other aspects to that project? And are we making the appropriate decisions based on the need for those exceptions on those projects as we go forward? So I'll turn it back over.
Yeah, I think the decision the council needs, you know, we, December 17th, I think, was the date that we passed the water and sewer ordinance. And that really, you know, did the 3.6 for single-family, seven for multifamily, or for townhomes, and nine for apartments. That, those were your, that was your density. And, you know, over the last year, we've talked a lot about, okay, well, you know, we need to average this area to this area to come up with that number. So what the council needs to decide, is that a hard, are there no exceptions? Single-family is 3.6 units per acre. And if a project comes into us that's greater than 3.6 units per acre, we're not going to consider it. And if the council says we're fine with those density numbers, then, you know, this is, like I said, it'll be a quick meeting. I mean, my opinion, I don't, I'm not trying to steer the agenda, but I don't think that's what we thought as a council. You know, I think if a single-family development came in that's five and a half units per acre, then there may be reasons why we want to improve that. So we need to, as a council, discuss, and as we get further along, it really gets into, it could be a hybrid to where we say, look, we don't want townhome developments to have any higher density than seven per acre. We don't want multifamily to have any more than nine per acre, but hey, we may want to have single-family with more. So the question that we all need to answer, and this really, we answer this and then it, you know, that's where we start going into the vision. Is that a hard, fast rule with each council member? Me, I'm a no. I think it should be, it should be able to be changed. It should be fluid.
Yeah, I'll weigh in. I don't think it should be a hard and fast rule either because I think what we've learned is, you know, part of the challenge becomes, we talk about single-family, but then we get into the discussion of single-family attached versus single-family detached. And then that gets confusing because we start associating single-family attached with multifamily and with rental property and those types of things, and they're not the same thing. And so, you know, I think one of the things that we had early discussion on was, you know, to Darren's credit, to the staff's credit, we didn't exactly know how to do this early on. We knew visionary, I think, some things that we wanted to accomplish with the sewer allocation. There are some things that we were probably less desirable. And if townhouses are one of those things, I think we need to talk about that. But we need to talk about it openly so that the Planning Commission has that information so that they can make better decisions. For me, single-family is attached and detached. It's the same. Okay? We also said that we wanted the council to have the ability to be the ultimate gatekeeper. So when we talk about Planning Commission and Planning Commission's role, staff's role, whatever else, what we said was, we wanted the council to be able to make the decision to deviate. So if that's changed, we need to say that. That's my two cents.
Sean, we'll just work our way around the table.
I think I like a hybrid system. Uh, I think there's some benefits to increasing it if you're getting some, uh, low-income housing, 55 and up deed-restricted property, things like that. But just to say, hey, we put this ordinance in place and now it doesn't really match, doesn't make much sense to bypass the ordinance originally.
So you would say you're okay with, i- i- it's not a hard, fast rule?
Right.
Okay. Bill?
Well, uh, planning is a living document. And I think when we, I think it's good for us to decide, given some of these parameters like our capacity, sewer capacity, what is reasonable to ask. But I think you've got to realize, and I think, quite honestly, Rick has said this time and again, when we have high-density projects presented to us, is that if you ying, there's going to be at some point a yang. You're going to have to have something smaller than that come to before you, and you're going to have to approve that. What, if we keep on raising the bar and making exceptions without the consideration, then, then we have extensively changed that what we thought was right, the normal is, is not going to be right anymore. That number's going to continue to go up. So I would be for, uh, not a hard, fast rule. But I think we always have to have that hard, fast rule in the background and, and recognize it's good for us to understand, given the parameters of, of our capacity and what's reasonable in our community, to have that before us. Now, then, again, it becomes a difficulty for, for what is, you know, everybody's, what is beautiful? What is a good project and a reasonable project? But that's why we have a vote. Uh, whenever that majority decides that's a reasonable exception to the rule, then we can move forward with that project. And we just have to trust the process will, to do that. But I would, I'm not a hard and fast rule on this. I don't think that's reasonable to do.
I agree with Bill. I think it should be case by case. Just depends on what project it is.
Rick, I, I'm fine with case by case. Um, the, I think the difference in what I typically bring up and, you know, maybe the way you phrase the question or the way that it's been answered is, is not at all what, what I ever have that much concern about. Those, those numbers of 3.6, 7, and 9 were based on a bigger picture idea that there would be a certain percentage of our total zonings that will be at 9. There will be a certain percentage of our total zonings that will be at 7, and a total number that will be at 3, so that we even out at this 3.8 or 3.9 number, which was the original overall number we have to be at. I, I don't care if somebody comes in, they say, hey, look, I've got a, a townhome development. I know your rule says 7, but this is going to be deed-restricted to over 55. And so we'd really like to try to get 8 and 1/2 in there. Okay, you've got a reason for having that. It's good so long as we haven't already rezoned every other rezoning that's come through for the last three years to apartments and towns. Because that's where we can never get to the 3.8 thing. So, so here's my deal. I mean, the hard and fast rule, the hard and fast rule on the 3, 7, and 9, I, I, I don't care about. The hard and fast rule of the 3.8 total, it is a hard and fast rule whether we like it or not. There's a certain amount of capacity that we have, period, whether we like it or not.
Well, we're going to get into all that.
Well, for what we have so far. So that's, I mean, that's where I'm at on.
All right. The, the next question that we came up with is, and I don't want any, first of all, I want to say this, as staff and anyone watching this.
Mayor?
Yes.
Do you want to call Ms. Kells Harris?
Yes, I'm sorry. Madeline, I forgot that you were out there in virtual land.
Oh, that's okay. I'm just, uh, doing the five-mile distance, and that's okay. Yeah, from what I'm understanding, it seems like the question is, if we want the ability to be flexible, it's, it's just a hard, fast rule, uh, that we don't deviate. I think projects that come before us, some of them will have unique circumstances, uh, facts that we have to deal with. So, you know, maybe the case by case may be a good, good way to go. I don't know.
Okay. It's super loud.
Yeah, and I think one thing to add, because I think it's important for people to understand is that, um, while we're saying it's not a hard and fast rule, that we flexibility, there will be certain areas, certain basins, that we will have a maximum number that we just won't be able to go pass.
I mean, if you wanted to go out and develop behind the Walmart right now on Rutherford Boulevard, we may have capacity over on, overall creek, and we may have capacity on Thompson Lane, but we do not have capacity in that area. So if you flush the toilets in that area on a, on a rain event, it's going to come up through the manhole in the streets. I mean, so that means we cannot service that area, right?
Right. That's important for the development.
And I think it's, I think it's important, Mayor, that we are consistent. Whichever way we go, that we're going to be consistent.
I think what you see these next questions, it's going to be a whole lot easier for us to give direction to staff so that way everybody knows what's consistent. So, and I wanted to say this as we're here, because, you know, I think it's good for us. One thing I can say about this council and, and the planning commission, we may disagree on stuff, but when we leave, we're fine. But, you know, as we go through these questions, I don't want staff or anyone who's sitting out there, because the majority of our growth and development staff, planners, water and sewer, uh, y'all are all here. And I think it's important for us, for us to have a vision in the direction we want to go. You need to see and hear from the council. And so I don't want anyone to get upset if we say the next question, what is the water and, what are resources development role in the decision-making process? Because, you know, the development, a lot of, over the last year, we've heard, well, you know, water and sewer thinks that this capacity is, you know, this is what we can handle. So where, as a, what do we feel like, and Darren may ask you, what, what is y'all's current role and what has changed over the last year on water and sewers? How you're involved in the development process?
Right. So, uh, so I'll say this, uh, and I said it earlier in the presentation. I was hesitant to endorse any project that had any incre- that the zoning allowed for any increase in density, just because we were blind. I did not know if we were quote upside down, as I said earlier, if we had overcommitted capacity. So for me to say, yeah, I, I'm going to endorse you getting more, more, uh, density, when I really didn't know if we were at, we would already, we were at the, at the brim, I thought would be irresponsible. Now that we see it, I'm going to tell you what our role is. We've got this many number of units of capacity, and if you have below that, then we can, uh, we can handle it. Now, as far as if it's counting the cost of, of, if that's the appropriate use, if that's the appropriate number of units for that property, if that, that's not going to be our role. Hey, we've got, it's just like fire flow, as we said. If, if, if I've got the ability to give you fire protection, yeah, for that type of building construction, that's a, that's a yay or nay. Same situation here. If that, if we've got that number of units, or you've got X number of units and we can handle it, I'm going to tell you yes. Then they need to go down the line to the next level to find out, is it compatible with surrounding land use? Does it meet the vision of the council and planning commission? I don't necessarily think that that's going to be water resources role. That's just, and you, you guys can tell me if that's wrong.
In other words, I think the question is, are we okay with water and sewer saying, yes, we can serve the project, no, we can't serve the project? And if they say that they can serve the project, then it's going to be up to the decision-making bodies, the council and the, and the planning commission to determine if there is a deviation in capacity. Does that sound?
How, how are you going to make the decision?
Yeah.
I mean, how, how are you going to make the decision, can we serve it? So, so for example, if there's 38,000 left connections, and somebody comes out on a pe- big piece of property route west of town on Highway 96, and they say, we're going to make 37,000 connections. Okay? We want 37,000 connections on this 900-acre farm.
Right, yeah. I don't know what you're talking about.
Are you going to say, we have the capacity for that? Because, look, we got 38,000 capacity. So if that was the case, my answer would be not only no. The, but if, if you're saying, well, actually, we've looked at this basin, here's how all the other property is currently zoned. And if you're coming in asking, you've asked for a 10% increase in the density, we could overall, everybody in that basin could have a 10% increase without screwing somebody else. Then your answer is yes, then my answer is yes. But we also need to know, if we give this person a 10% increase, are we taking 10% from somebody else? I.e. a piece of property over off of Mercury Boulevard that we recently dealt with?
Right.
And so, so then the question that has to be answered, what are we taking into account as to whether we can or can't serve it?
Well, well, so, so I would consider anything substantive, you know, several hundred connections, that we would plug it into the model and show you that ripple effect, right? And say, yes, we can handle it. And, but these are the ramifications, these are the consequences of, of permitting these connections. And again, count the cost, is it worth it to you, uh, from all the other perspectives?
Yeah, that's great. I mean, I, I think that's great information.
It's not really a yes, no answer. It's, it might be no, because, you know, you're just out of capacity. But it's a yes, but here's what it means and all the data that goes with it.
Do we have to stay in order, or can we jump out this time?
Absolutely, man.
You know, one of the things, this is, I mean, this is really great. When we were talking at planning months ago about having a heat map, and it's basically what you've built, what, what the staff has built. So I think it's great. You know, my two cents would be, when we've got red, you know, that kind of means stop or slow or caution. That's what we talked about at planning. Um, I think integrating that, if possible, um, in the planning process, because one of the things that was kind of frustrating to me, you know, we had that Tiger Hill and that Veterans project that came through. And we were all kind of confused, like, what's going on? Why is this okay? We're moving from personal, we're going to townhouses, staff's for it, but you're not for it in the same meeting on the same thing? Well, the answer was, sorry Valerie, Valerie said it was okay, or Darren said it was okay, because we've got these things. Well, that creates a challenge for the decision-making body and then in potential inconsistency as it flows through planning to council, because we're kind of confused. And sometimes I think there's an opportunity for us to get better and to do a better job articulating why we think it's different. But if we've got a color-coded map, it makes it a whole lot easier if we can say, hey, it's red, that should scare you a little bit. Or when you said, um, in these boxes, hey, these red areas that we've drawn, check with water and sewer. To me, that's what you're the gatekeeper on. Because i- if, if it's a check with water and sewer, that means there's a significant enough possibility that when you hit the flush tank, it's going in the street, that we need to be concerned. And I think that keeps the planning commission out of a difficult situation and us out of a difficult situation.
And it lets developers know, when they look at that heat map, it lets them know, hey, if I'm going into this area where we are already scarce on our capacity, I'm just not going to be able to bring in an average project and them give me the capacity. They're going to have to bring in something that is a good project.
So if developer, if, so if I'm a developer and I come and I go to planning commission and I say, hey, I've got this project, I want to present to you guys, so who's making the call? So is it, is it planning or is it water and sewer? That, I think that's the issue that we need to resolve. Because planning can't move forward in a corrective manner if they don't know, if they, they're calling the shots, or is it water and sewer calling the shots? I think that's what we need to ta- we need to be talking about here. I mean, I think we're all on the same page as far as density and everything else, but who's calling the shots? Because if I'm a developer and I, and I walk in and I'm talking planning, and I, I'm talking to them 24/7, but they can't give me an answer if I can develop, develop this project or not, that's a problem. Water and sewer should not be making decisions on if it's, if it's good or not. I think planning should be making that decision, but they should be coordinating with water and sewer to say, hey, we've looked on this map and we, we think this project is good for the city.
Well, you've always had though, I mean, it's really a collective effort, and we're picking on Darren.
We're not, we're not, we're not picking on anybody.
I think that's what I said. I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I.
Just water and sewer here, though. I mean, it shouldn't just say WRD role, because, you know, streets, you know, streets slash traffic, roads, whatever you want to call it, you know, all that is a factor. I mean, you know, if, if you come in and you say, well, hey, look, are they the ones making decisions? Or is it planning staff making decision or plan? Well, if Rom comes out and says, there's no way to get 400 trucks in and out of that intersection every day, then it's Rom making the decision, or Jim, or who, you know, Chris, I mean.
That may be planning or density, it's not sewer. Sewer, we nail down to some extent.
Really, it really can be.
It's always a collective.
It goes back to that bin background we had, that there is all those factors involved.
We already have this process in place when we go through an annexation. You know, we have to, we have to give a plan of services. And the fire department says, yes, we can service this, but there's going to have to be two fire hydrants that are going to have to be located at X and Y position. Or we say, yes, we can pick up trash in these, this area. So, I mean, to me, it just seems, if it's in this model and we can provide sewer to it, it's a, it's a pretty cut and dry answer. Yes, we can provide sewer, no, we can't provide sewer. CUD, in some areas, CUD can provide water and there's pressure, CUD can't provide water and there's not pressure. So yes, there's sewer there, no, there's not sewer there. And then it gets kicked over into the planning process to say, let's now talk about the project. The thing I think, right. And the thing I think we have to be careful about, again, this is my opinion, but, you know, our, when we started the gateway, we didn't have the sewer capacity I would argue we probably have right now. Because we had not, we had not built the water treatment facility. You know, the $40 million.
Right.
And if, if we had just looked at sewer capacity, we would have missed out on 10% to 12% of our total income for the entire city. And so if we're just always looking at, what's this going to be five years from now, 10 years from now? Well, technology's going to change. I mean, things are going to change. So we just can't miss out on something because we're worried about if we, if we can serve it now. You know, so I, I do think sometimes the, the victor gets the spoils. And if we have somebody that wants to go out on a limb and do a nice project, that, if we can serve it, then.
My, 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 my only ultimate goal was to make sure that we weren't upside down, that we weren't overcommitting, and then somebody gets halfway through their project, we lose, we don't have the capacity and we got to shut them down. You know, let's say Shelton Square, whatever, 500 units. They get 300 units built, oh, wait a minute, pump station's maxed out, the wharf is maxed out. Sorry, those extra 200 lots, you're done. All I'm trying to make sure is that when we, again, counting the cost, counting, what are we approving? And do we have, do we believe we have that capacity to serve it? And if we do, then yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't see us as being the, the approval, the approver of, of it moving forward. We're just going to be a go-no-go switch at this point.
Let me, let me suggest something a little different, that, a different way of looking at the process. Because we have people who are advisors and providers, you guys at that ground level. And then you have people that are making decisions, the planning commission and the council. And since that, we're the final gatekeepers, we, we need the right kind of information. And when we do a plan of services, I've, I've often been frustrated by the fact that we say, yeah, red light, green light. And that's all we get. And then all of a sudden, we hear about, well, when we go to a public meeting or we hear someone in public comments say, well, you know, what about this? What about this? Have you done a planning study? Have you done a traffic study? Have you done all these kinds? You know, but we got a red light that, that we hear about when it gets to the final gatekeeper or it's a public hearing at the planning department. Let, let me think, let me just suggest maybe a different way of looking at responsibility for staff in this. Instead of red light, green light, red light, yellow light, green light, that has that opportunity in that plan of services. And I know it's there, and often, you know, you take a part of it, but I've often seen, we don't hear that concerns of staff. Some do, some of the council have heard, heard things before we, you know, here at, at the final gatekeeper. So I, I think the idea is there needs to be the opportunity. Don't pass it along red light or green light, but a yellow light. If you have long-term considerations with your understanding of how the system could grow, might grow, or might be impacted by that, that's the yellow light. And we have a yellow light there that planning commission can look at and say, oh, wait a minute. Now, we might decide that the yellow lights, that's a worthy risk for us to move forward on. But we're at least aware of the fact that there is, that staff and the people that have considered this and have more knowledge of that than us have a caution that we need to consider. So that be presented to the deliberative bodies as a, a yellow light.
Sure. Absolutely. I'll, I'll say this, I mean, you know, because I, like Bill said. I'll, I'll say this, I mean, you know, because I, like Bill said, I bring up the Indiana or whatever, the, the give and the take. And I'm still, I mean, I, I can tell you that on the annexation front, it's, it's a terrible system to say, yes, we can or we can't serve it. I mean, can we get a fire truck across the railroad track to get there? Yes, we can. But is it the right thing to do or the smart way to plan or whatever? That's a completely different thing. So look, I get the idea that, I think where we're, there's kind of two parts to this, I hope. And one part is to free you up from responsibility to be thinking that you're the gatekeeper above whatever happens or doesn't happen as it relates to zoning. I mean, I think that's really the underlying discussion that's kind of part of what's going on here. And so I, I free you of that, that, you know, personally, I will tell you, my vote is you are free of that, that responsibility, right? It's, we are the gatekeepers.
That's right.
Now, the other, what's not okay. I mean, look, what's not okay about this is a green light, red light system to me. I mean, there's no way that that can work. I mean, it hasn't worked for annexation because what happens is can you do it or can you not? Yes, we can. But does it make sense? Needs to happen at some level before it gets all the way through the public hearing at the Planning Commission and all the way into the public hearing at the city council. I mean, I think, I hope that's something that we're going to try to fix today, or at least start to fix. And, and just saying a red light, green light is the way ain't going to fix it. So I, I mean, I don't, I'd even go an A, B, C, D, F system instead of just a red light, yellow light, green light. I mean, give us some range of, look, this is going to substantially impact the downstream development in this basin, or it's not.
I would, I would suggest some pros and cons. When you, when you put out a yellow light, you need to list the pros and cons so we can make a decision on those pros and cons.
Yeah, and I'll tell you just my personal belief, well, this is what's been in my head all these years as far as like pros and cons go. What sticks in my head is I know if somebody comes in at 5.5 and our overall number has to be 3.8, it's got to be an automatic yellow light, because you're taking away from somebody else. And so have we considered who we're taking away from? The guy over there off of Mercury Boulevard? I mean, have we considered that guy, right? I mean, and if so, we, so be it. I mean, look, I don't agree with the whole idea that first come, first served, victor gets the spoils. I wouldn't give 37,000 connections to one.
But Rick, you're never going to have somebody come in and take the entire. I mean, we've had 3,000 a year, so I mean, I'm just saying, we got 20 years of capacity right now, the overall city. The thing I'm, I'm, I think.
We had to say no to somebody.
I, I totally agree, but I.
It happens.
But I don't think that you can look at somebody else, and I'm not trying to be the development homer. I'm just saying it makes sense that, a great example is the Hoard property. We know that property's going to come into the city. But if they come in and they say, look, we want to bring 300 acres into the city, and we say, no, we can't do that, we're saving, we're saving, we got this property out here at Veterans that we need to save that property. And that part, that person may never have the likelihood they ever want to develop it. So I'm just saying, at some point, you can't penalize somebody for wanting to bring a project through.
Well, where's the line? I mean, so that's, I think we got to define that, right? We got to at least get somewhere closer to where we give and where we don't give.
That'll be coming.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go back to annexation, just, sorry, for a second. I, I think that, I hear what you're saying, I hear what council's saying on annexation. I think it's, a few years ago, we kind of changed from anybody that wants in, gets in, to more consideration. So we're working on that. But I don't want people to lose sight of that, the plan of services that you get is a statutory requirement. So we have to hit those, but it doesn't mean we can't supplement it, and I think that's what you're asking for.
Yeah, correct.
But you'll still have to see a plan of services that comes through that addresses certain things, because that's what the legislature did to us.
Agreed.
And then we'll get further into depth after that.
Sam, I don't mean to, we, we're on the first topic, so we really need to get, I mean, so I think we've all said, it's not a hard-fish rule and water and sewer shouldn't be the over, they should be part of the process, not the, the decision maker. Did I miss that?
Correct. And I think maybe just to add a little bit of color on process, annexation is a separate issue than zoning. Annexation's statutory, it looks as an as-is condition. The zoning plan is where we really need to talk about the impacts and benefits of the project, not necessarily an annexation. Then I'd also say the sewer allocation ordinance also has that hard stop. If a project comes in today and it's bumping the sewer allocation ordinance, we're going to say, you've got to seek relief from the sewer allocation ordinance, that's this body. And so we're going to, we've got to bring that to you. We can't tell them no or yes, we've got to bring that to you. So we've got, we've got multiple processes working that's going to shape the, the decisions and the impact and the, the reality of the projects. And just keep that in mind as we, as we move ahead. It's not just annexation, it's not just zoning, it's not sewer allocation. All of those processes have to work together and, and be considered and approved for that project to move forward.
Sam, do you want to hit this next one since you?
Yeah. Yeah, sorry about that, I should have stayed in my seat, I guess. So, density is, is a big driver for us on sewer allocation. But density also has drivers on other things, has, it has drivers on the business plan for the developer. It has impacts on traffic, has impacts on school, has impacts on delivery of service. And so, you know, thinking about the vision for our community and sewer allocation somewhat driving this, but also really the vision of our, of our decision-makers, what, what justifies a significant increase in density? What things about the project make it make sense for the city to approve that request for increase in density? I think that's a good place, I'll stop right there and then maybe, and I would think it'd be helpful here for the Planning Commission also to engage a little bit more from this point forward.
Yeah.
In the, you know, in the, the discussions.
So Planning Commission, you've had, if it's made it to you to this, this point, I don't think you, the Planning Commission will necessarily be able to decide whether they're going to give the capacity up or not. I think that'll be a council decision, by the ordinance, we have to do that. But if you've got a project that's coming through you, coming to you, that you see is asking for a density increase, and you've got these items, the quality of the project, the architecture, you know, amenities, what the expectation of the P R D application, what are the things, as since y'all are seeing these plans, that you feel like would entail giving a density increase?
All of them.
One thing that, that would entail it to me, but it's not up there, and that would be if it's an affordable project based on the average income for the city. And is this going to be affordable for an average citizen? If it, if affordability means we need to increase the density so that that project goes through, then I would consider that. But we never get into the affordability of any project.
One that we messed up there is public infrastructure. So something to think about too is if, you know, a project's coming through and they're adding a turning lane on a busy street, or if they're widening, you know, the frontage in front of their property, so that, that's another one. But are those all, and council for y'all too, are those all expectations that we would take into account to agree a density increase would be warranted?
I think, I think those things are good. I think there's probably a list, maybe three or four or five times that big that we can't see because we're not looking at the specific project. And so the, my perspective on that would be, it's going to be really hard to come up with a list to say, if it's not on this list, we're not going to consider it for a density increase. Because I think there are so many permutations of what could happen based on specific developments. For me, I just think it would be important to make the decision that there are some criteria that we would look at that would warrant a density increase. And while we may not always agree on all that specific criteria, it all fits in the box of, hey, we're willing to consider it if there are certain things here. Now, others may disagree and say, no, it has to have these things. But I think that's going to be very individualistic and I think it's going to be very case by case. Because, you know, to Warren's point about affordability, you know, we don't talk a lot about that. Another thing that I think we should talk more about is should we grant density increases for smaller projects? So if you've got a 20, 30, 40, 50 unit project and we've got a density increase of going from 3.6 to 5 or to 8, does that have the same impact on infrastructure? Does it have the same impact on schools that a 300 unit project would have that has a higher density deviation? So I mean, I think that's another piece. It's, it takes less, I'm not a planner, so obviously I don't know what I'm talking about. But I think it's easier to plan around those smaller developments. Now, that's harder to do because you've got the expense of the land, the expense of the horizontal improvement to actually bring those things online. But I think if we can incentivize something, that makes things easier. So again, for me, that would be something that's not on the list, smaller projects.
The question I have with architecture is who's determining which architecture's more important? Oh, we want a four-square here, we want something that looks like it belongs in the desert over here. Who decides, I mean, that's pretty arbitrary, who decides which architecture we're going to grant an, a increase in just because they look different?
So that goes into the question, this is really skipping forward, that's a good question. Sean brought up a good point a while back, or I guess a couple of weeks ago, about, you know, his time on the Planning Commission. And this really goes more towards the end of this discussion, but we can have it now, is what do we expect from staff? As we have an architect sitting here at the table, Jennifer, what, what do we expect? What are the expectations in a P R D, P R D application? And what do y'all expect regarding staff input on architecture?
It's a combination of, there are some black and white rules, you know, and we try to be consistent. And sometimes the developer will come and ask for a waiver against a small, you know, six-inch difference in this or that or a type of material. So the easy way out is when it's black and white, and it's you can or cannot use this type of material. And we've, we've had, we've had to consider use of material that doesn't really meet the exact standard being asked for in the, in the guidelines. But it's, it's hard because it's, it's an opinion. You feel like, well, it's not exact, but we still like it. It's, it's a, Ken might like it and I might not like it. And that's where it gets really difficult.
I guess the question is, should planners be telling projects, no, I want to see this type of arct- if there's not anything defined? Should the planner have the ability to say, I want to see a white window, I don't like that front porch, I want to see railings on the front porch, I don't like that roof color, I don't like your brick color? I mean, how much leeway do we want to give the planners on designing a project?
And it's not necessarily as much as you would give them, because I mean, if they say, I mean, we've had the situation where, no, they're going to bring it to us no matter what, because they have the right to do that, right? So it's more of a, sometimes it comes across as a guidance, that planners might offer guidance because they feel like they might be more successful with a white porch versus a tan porch.
Right.
So I'm not really answering the question, I'm just kind of reiterating the, the situation I feel like we see sometimes. And it is a gray area and it's very difficult. But they have, I believe they have, a developer has the right, if it's not against a specific guideline, to ask for approval on what they think is good architecture.
They're, they're taking all the risks. So if they build something that's god-awful hideous, then they're the ones that are going to lose out. As long as it's within guidelines.
Yeah, and I think my opinion would be, I'm okay if we have guidelines. I would probably be on the side to be lenient on guidelines, generally speaking. But where guidelines do not exist, I think there's not a whole lot of room for someone to weigh in on that. So, you know, we talk, we talk a lot about the gateway and there are guidelines. I'd probably be the most liberal person in my time on the Planning Commission. I didn't say a whole lot about that because there were plenty that were defending, you know, the ground on that. But if there are not guidelines in place, we either need to have guidelines in place that we can agree on or we don't need to be telling people what to do, would be my two cents, so.
Don't you think that most of the time, and Matthew and other planners might say, I don't know that you're saying what you like as much as what is the history of, that has gone through the Planning Commission and gone through our, our city council? That's what they're explaining to them, they don't necessarily say, I like that or I don't like that. I think the issue is their, their history, the history that we have expressed our opinions on and therefore you have more likelihood of getting approval if you do this and you do that. And then we've had just something recently that we all disagreed about it, you know? So it got to four votes and, you know, it goes through or it doesn't. And that's kind of the process, and you respect the process, that, you know, all of this is subjective to some degree. We all have our own opinions, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. And so we, you know, we just yield to the process and trust that, you know, ultimately we will have done the right thing.
I'll mention, I'll say this, just being on the number of years that I've been on the Planning Commission, I'm far from being an architect and it, and I'll be the first person to say, looking at a picture, I don't know what it's going to look like when it's built. So I've leaned heavily on staff through the years with respects to their opinion and getting what I would call a quality project to the table. There's been things that I didn't necessarily agree with, that maybe they didn't like about the particular project. And again, that's, I think that's why we're on the Planning Commission, to, to voice those opinions. But I do think it is helpful for the staff to give an opinion, to get it to the point where they feel comfortable with it, because, I'm just speaking for me, I'm going to rely heavily on their opinion, because I'm not an architect.
All right, so let's, what are our expectations in a P R D? I want to really quickly hit on this after, I don't, I don't want to sound like the old guy up here with me and Ken who've, I guess, been on Planning Commission or council the longest. How long are you, 20 years on Planning Commission?
I don't, I'm not sure, just to be Tommy Bragg, how about that?
It's a lo, it's a long time.
I think it's 32.
Our P R D applications, the P R D application that we got two Thursday nights, three Thursday nights ago or four Thursday nights ago was not good. And, you know, typically when we, we're giving somebody a density increase, they are showing, for example, in that case, I can't remember what the density was, Rick, it went, it was 5.6 maybe? Which is, which is clearly greater than the 3.6 on single family. So it's two units per acre, so on that development, that's 22 units per acre. And to give you the background, whenever you pull a permit, and I see our planners back there, so y'all tell me if I'm wrong on this, you have to go into, to the, your first stop is to the planning department with an application, a plot plan on a P R D and your construction plans. And they look at that to make sure that that has met what the plan development that was approved. Am I right on that so far? Well, the, the, the plan that we got the other night had, I think it had one or two single-family elevations and there was like 18 single-family elevations. So you're telling me that that, that project's only going to build two houses in there? So how do we set our, our planners and our team up to be able to approve what's in a plan development where we're giving away density, but the plan development book is bare bones? So my opinion, if somebody is coming on the expectations of the P R D and they're, you know, they're asking for two more units per acre, so that's 22 units on that, that project, that's a lot of income. And if we're going to give that density away, then we shouldn't have a developer coming saying, well, it's just so hard to do this P R D, it costs so much money. Well, you're getting 22 more units than what was approved. So you're going to have to spend a little extra money, you're going to have to fully develop your plans. You're going to have to give us all the things that go in that plan book. So 15 years from now, if the plan's not developed out, it's there. Now, where we've crossed back over on that is when we went through the recession, then we spent four years just going through amending P R Ds because what was approved back then, it, it didn't work. So, you know, there is a negative to that, but as we're talking about the sewer, I mean, for me, my expectations of P R D would be fully-developed architecture. And I'm not talking about it, you got to have floor plans and everything, but you should be able to have elevations that show what the plans are going to look like. And if you've got 30 houses in there, then it's conceivable you're probably going to have five or six floor plans. And so you should be able to show, here's what we're going to build, not, you know, two. So we need, in my opinion, to give that density away, we need better P R D applications. And there are people who turn in really good P R D applications. But that would be where I would think staff would say, maybe the developer says, look, this is all I'm going to do. And staff can say, okay, that's fine, but we're going to have to let the Planning Commission know, we couldn't get that, your plan to where we felt like it was acceptable to present, but we're going to present it anyway. So what, what are y'all's thoughts on, on what you want to see on those P R D applications?
Well, I think in, in that case. Well, I think in that case, that's the yellow light. You're going to have to, you're going to have to have the idea, because a lot of times, those things come to us. And like I say, we don't find out until we're the final person to make a decision, and we don't know that there was concerns from staff. I think that happened recently, where some people on Council, and I'm not sure about the Planning Commission, because I think there was some conversation as to whether this conversation had happened at the Planning Commission. And the Council members said it never, that conversation never happened at the, at the Planning Commission level. So, and the reason is because you didn't see the yellow light. The staff didn't let you know that there was a yellow light and concern, or you weren't aware of it. So I, I think we have to rely upon staff to provide some kind of protocol for them to get their concerns to Council. If you're going to let it go on, if they have the legal right to present something that staff, and I'm assuming they do, have the right to present something that staff doesn't recommend, they have the legal right to do that. So if they do, then, then we have to impress the need for staff to communicate clearly to all of the Planning Commission members and all of the Council's members, some protocol that allows you to have a block or something that communicates what your concerns are. Because it gets to the final, you know, to the final hoop, and all of a sudden, we're going, wait a minute, then we've got some concerns, because it came up in the middle of a discussion. And you don't know the right questions to ask at that point in time. And so if the, and I think somebody on Council continued the conversation, and we got to the point of getting a little more clarity about that. But there needs to be a clear path and a clear protocol for staff to impress upon us their concerns about things.
And to add on to that, it all needs to be treated equally, too. I can think about one project that came up in front of Council several months ago, that we were down to the point that the pad height needed to be this, the windows needed this, it needs this, it needs this. Then you fast forward to the project the mayor was referencing, and it was like the polar opposite bit of attention. So if we're going to pay attention strictly on one, it needs to be strict on all of them. Or if we're going liberal on all of them, let's go liberal on all of them. But let's treat every project exactly the same.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm fine, too, on the PRDs. If we're giving away extra density, I do think there needs to be higher expectations. So I mean, I don't have an issue with that at all.
Is my commissioner, y'all?
No, I would 100% agree with that, because.
So staff, I think Sam and Greg, with y'all's group, if you've got, as Bill and Rick have said, that the yellow light, if density comes through and, you know, staff or Water and Sewer give the report that say, yes, we can serve this, but here are the X, Y, and Z, that the ripple effect, as Rick said, then for our team, that would let them know, it needs to be a good project, you know?
I'll make a couple of comments on this real quick, just while we're at it, just so I can get it out there. I mean, amenities, you know, again, how we treat these things, what does that mean? What does architecture mean? Who gets to make that call? I mean, you know, it seemed like we've had a lot of amenity features come in lately with a little fenced-in area about as big as the inside of this, and it's a dog park. And, you know, that's okay, but that doesn't necessarily mean you should get 50% more density than the average neighborhood, to me. You know, I mean, so, yeah, that's an amenity. Whether or not, that's something I think justifies some real big increase of density. I don't believe so personally, but those are things I think, again, I mean, and look, as it relates to architecture, I think as much, let me say this the right way, as many comments as I've made about whether it be PRDs, or zoning, rezonings, those kinds of things, you know, I don't know that anybody's ever heard me talk about what color the shutters are, or, I mean, you know, how high the pad is, or that kind of stuff. I mean, I, I've always felt fairly comfortable, by the time it gets to us, between staff and the Planning Commission, that it's probably not going to be a bright orange building with a bright orange roof. So, I mean, for me to say, I mean, I care about all that. I mean, I care about what our city looks like, you know? I mean, I'll just say it. I mean, and so just to say, well, if they're going to take the risk and build it, you know, I mean, I get that. I understand that. But to a certain degree, I also think I believe that I don't want to just let anybody build whatever the heck they want to build, because they think an orange roof and an orange building might sell them more loans.
Well, that's why I said, within guidelines.
Yeah, I mean, but, but I think what Ronnie said is important, too. Where there is an absence of guidelines is where we kind of get in the middle of these, these little, these deals between whether it be amongst Council members, or staff and us, and I mean, so.
Do you think you should get an increased density just because a project's pretty?
No, I mean, I, I think the idea behind this is probably correct, that, look, these are all things that probably should be considered. You know, y'all know where I come from on this, most of you, at least, I think, is it's still back to this big-picture thing. What impact does it have? And, you know, something to me, what, I mean, because here's the difference between Planning Commission and what, what we've got to do. One of the differences is that, you know, we got to, there's a whole nother side of this page. What entails a density increase? Well, how about the budget impact? You know, what impact is that project going to have on our budget? You know, are we going to have to build a new school? Are we going to have to do this? Are we going to have to do that? Are we going to have to build more road? You know, all those things have to be considered somewhere in here. Are we going to have to build a new plant? I mean, so, you know, we're talking about what entails density increase. I'm with it. I get it. The reason that I concurred with Sean's idea about, you know, the 55 and over density increase is because I already know that the budget impact of that is offset. Not as much sewer use, not as much traffic, no kids in school, you know? And so I already know all that. But if we don't factor that in, I think the result is a very large tax increase after a few years of doing this. And, and look, Shane, to your point about, you know, we're only doing 3,000 or 4,000 each year, I know that. But what I also know is five or 10 years rolls by pretty fast. And if we treat every, and something that you're saying, I'm not just trying to argue with you guys, but I'm trying to bring this up, so you know where I'm coming from. And hopefully, we can all discuss these things and be thinking about them. A small project has the same amount of impact when there's 10 of them. And, and after five years, there are, you know what I mean? And so back of the original, I mean, I think a great illustration of this is the original sewer allocation documentation that Darren gave us, was just sort of these five and 10 and 15-year trends going back to the year 2000, of, you know, we've done all these little projects, and it, you know, rezonings, to me, are very similar to annexations. I don't know if that's correct or not, but I sort of have them in my mind as the same. If we're going from an RS-15 to a RM-16, that's the same as annexing somebody in it an RM-16, to me, right? I mean, you know, you got to account for that density, one way or another. I know there's differences, but you get the idea, I hope. So.
No, I think you and me are on the same page. Actual value to the community. What's it doing for traffic? What's it doing for?
We have to, I mean, we just have to incorporate that.
Yeah, and so it's more of a holistic thing, not just, this is, it's got a park, it's got a four-side brick, whatever. It's more of like, what holistically, how does this development affect the community? Does it bring value to the community to get the increase in density?
And I'm not even sure if it's fair. I mean, look, I went through on my meeting with Greg and Matthew and Sam and David yesterday for the Planning Commission stuff. I mean, look, after that meeting, I'm not even sure if it's fair to ask the Planning Commission to deal with some, some things that, that we deal with, you know, or, you know. But then again, on the same breath, maybe it's not fair to be upset at a council for making a decision based on things that are completely separate from what Planning Commission should be thinking about. So I, I mean, you know, this stuff is not easy, or else it would have been done years ago. So I'm, I don't know, I'm trying to explain my thoughts on this, so everybody knows.
Let's go to, I think the next, the next slide will make a little more sense on, when we talk about vision, this, I think, will help y'all coming through. Like Ronnie talked about, you know, single-family attached and single-family detached, that townhomes and single-family detached. So, you know, that gets the single-family side. But.
The townhomes, I'm sorry, but I hear townhomes being called single-family attached.
That's correct.
So, or is it the same, or is it different?
Well, it's, it's, the density's different. I mean, we've got the density at seven per acre is what we've got single-family attached at right now. So.
I got it as different. If Ronnie's got the same, I got it as different, just for what it's worth.
Their fee's simple, so they're not, you know, they're owned by, they're owned by owners. And, you know, that's, that's affordable homes in Murfreesboro now. I mean, that's, townhomes are, that's the Evergreen $99,000 house back 20 years ago. So, as a council, Sam, did y'all pull up how much un, or how much platted, not platted, but how many approved multifamily units that we've got in Murfreesboro that have not been built? Did Matthew do that?
Yeah, I think Matthew did most of the work on that, and he's feverishly looking for the, for the number. But Greg, you thought the number was 1,900 unbuilt units that are currently approved, or have a zoning entitlement? I think that may be the better term. So, so the land is zoned to allow it. That's silent on whether the sewer system can handle it. That's only on what the, on the land entitlement.
So the, the thing that we discussed is, what you don't want to happen is the Planning Commission sending, you know, sending projects to the council, and they're like, what the heck's the council thinking? You know, they didn't vote, they didn't pass that. So do we, knowing that if we have 2,000 units that are approved multifamily units, and this is, would be able really to give the planners, Greg, Sam, more feedback, if a developer comes in with a piece of property, say, outside of the gateway, that's a different discussion. But if, if a, if a developer comes in with a multifamily apartment complex outside of a certain area, does the council want to see any more of those come through, or are we frowning on more apartment complexes coming into the city?
I'm going to make a comment first on this, but here's the deal.
Should this before Rick does?
This is easy. I'm just going to lay, I'm not, I don't even think I'm going to answer it, because here's, here's the thing. I mean, my, what I wish that the council had to give to them was a range, here's where we currently are, okay? You know, and where do we want to be 10 years from now? What do we want our housing mix to look like 10 years from now? If we don't, if we don't, first of all, know where we are as a whole, for example, I think I saw that slide up there, I think a third of our doors in this town are apartments right now. In Murfreesboro, Tennessee, 25,000 of the 75,000 sewer connections doors that we have in this town are already apartments. Do we think that's the appropriate number? And why? Do we think it's too many? Do we think it's not enough? I mean, look, because if we, if we say we think the range should be, for easy math here, 17 to 24%, and we're already at 25, that answer, that question's answered.
Well, here's the problem with that, though. What if we develop a new area that apartments fit very nicely there and provide rooftops to support commercial, a mixed-use-type project, something like that? I'm not talking about adding more apartments to the gateway, but if we do something else, right? If we say we're at our limit, then we've really restricted the opportunity for what highest and best use can be done with a certain property, and how it builds out.
I think there would have to be really good reasons.
And I agree.
I think there has to be really good reasons for our ranges. Sam?
Let me just jump in and give you some additional information. We have 4,000 higher-density residential. That's townhomes and multifamily apartments on the books that can be developed now under the current zoning. So that's 4,000 units. And I would say that the differentiation there is that those are higher-density developments. They're going to be above our 3.5, 3.6 units per acre. They're going to be more in the 10 to 16 units per acre, based on.
Higher than 3.5, or higher than 10s?
Higher than 3.5. Going to be more, townhomes are going to be more 7 to 10-ish, and the multifamily's going to be in that 16-unit-per-acre range.
You wouldn't be including, like, RS-8 in that?
No, that'd be a single-family product, single-family detached.
I'm just saying, that would be more than 3.8, too. But that's not included in that number. You see where I get?
The 3.8 would probably be close on an RS-8 in a typical development.
Here is, hey, Sam, so if we've got 4,000 units, how many units, do we have any idea how many units were built in 2020, or 2019?
We do, and I'll get that number for you. We just, there's some, some numbers coming out of our annual building activity report that include all development activities, the plans we've reviewed, the permits we've issued, the rezonings we've conducted. And so it'll take me just a second, but we can give you a 2020 breakdown, and we can even compare that. I think, I think Matthew pushed out an email yesterday that had four or five years' worth of data just summarized in some tables. And so we'll, we'll come back to you on that one.
I have to try and get a trajectory, which way we're headed. I love it.
Sean?
To me, for now, the spot, just looking at a glass now, I think we've kind of put a freeze on multifamily for now. And I've spoken nauseam about the balance between homeownership and rental properties, and downturns in the economy, and what a transient society looks like towards rental property. And if we've got a quarter of our doors that are already for sure rental properties, you've got a quarter of the population that during a downturn could just be gone. So we've got to get back to a more healthy balance between homeownership and a rental thing. So to me, I'm not saying forever. I'm saying for right now, just kind of put a kibosh on the multifamily until the homeownership ratios start coming up higher.
But, but that also means we have to separate medium-density and high-density from multifamily and townhouses.
And I think townhouses are good. They're the new modern-day starter, single-family starter home.
Multifamily, in, in, in my mind, is apartment, I mean, apartments, because it's multifamilies living in the same, you know, the same, under the same roof. So is the council saying, we don't want to see any more multifamily? So if a, if a developer brings in a project, there'd be a, there better be a really dang-good reason why that that project's being presented. And the planners could easily tell the developer, hey, the council has said that, that we've got 2,000 units of multifamily that's already approved inside the city, and that's enough right now. And if, but we can't tell you legally that you can't bring an application forward. But if you bring an application forward, you need to be under, under the understanding that.
I threw a little wrinkle in it.
No.
To Ronnie's point, though, for, for new areas that are yet to be developed.
Let's say the Hoard, where Cherry Lane is, the new Hoard property.
Think about this. The way that the math really works is, is not really none for those areas. The math is, it has to be less than what the total is now. So we want to use the Hoard property, or Cherry Lane, you know, whatever. If that, if that comes into development, if we said our goal is to be at 14 to 17%, whatever the number is, I don't know, guys, right? So, but then you really ought to be, ought to have, 15% of those doors should actually be able to be multifamily, because you're bringing down the average, because we're already at a third, you see? So I mean, I'm actually okay. I think I'm agreeing with Ronnie.
I'm just trying to vote.
I'm trying to agree with Ronnie on this. I mean, look, I'm not, I'm not thinking they're all, that you, there's never a spot for this stuff. I just think where there's already 4,900 around it, yeah, obviously, I don't think there needs to be another 600.
Well, that's why I said, for now, I mean, Cherry Lane's several years in the future, which at least is something totally different.
We don't have a new area right now, as the Planning Commission and the Council, we don't have a new gateway area that we have identified that's going to be coming forward in the next, you know, the next thing that we've seen would be Cherry Lane with the new interchange and.
We might, we might look at Veterans and 840 because of the way, sort of, the, the first few projects out of the gate on Veterans at 840 have, have started to shape that, in what we understand out there. There's still about 6, 800 acres out there that's available for development. So I would suggest maybe Veterans and 840 is one, Cherry Lane, Broad Street, 840 is another one, several, several hundred acres in that area. I think, based on Darren's report today, looking back internally at some redevelopment, or some infill development in the core of the city, would be an important thing for us to look at, that maybe allows us to rebrand, say, Broad Street, for example. Let me pitch these numbers out to you. I wish we had these printed, or to put them up on the screen. But last four years, the numbers roughly have half of our. the numbers roughly have half of our new residential units, single-family detached, and the other half are multifamily or townhomes. So, you understand that right now, the break is about 50/50 and that's true for about the last four years, which is the, the extent of our table. In 2020, we issued 2,000 total residential permits. In 2019, we issued 2,150 permits. In 2018, we issued 2,750 permits. And then in 2017, we issued 2,470 residential permits. And, and again, those numbers are working about half, single-family detached in that mix.
All right, I'll vote. 33% is enough, if not too much, for me.
Could I ask?
By the way, there's about 52, between 48 and 52% of the people in Murfreesboro rent, according to the census. So, in addition to the, in addition to the, just the 33% apartment, you got another bunch of people that are renting houses. So, about 50 some odd percent, right at about 50% rental occupancy in the city of Murfreesboro, according to the census. Maybe Rutherford County, actually, now I think about it, I can't remember how it was broken.
I mean, I think the developments that we've approved out in the gateway, as far as the multifamily, those are probably nicer than some of the single-family units we have in this city and they're paying more out there. And, you know, the people I talk with, they're, they're young professionals who don't want to have a house, that are not married, who, you know, may not, don't want to be committed to a house. So, I think, I'm not gonna make excuses for those projects, because those are some super nice projects. But I think if we could go back 20 years, we would say we made a mistake on St. Andrews. We put too many multifamily units all right there together. We've taken Highway 99 and we've put predominantly multifamily apartment complexes down Highway 99. So, there, I mean, we did it and I, I'm, I'm saying I was part of it. I think it was a mistake and that's why I think moving forward, unless it's in, you know, the areas like Sam was talking about, the downtown area where, I mean, that is your affordable project, hopefully, moving forward. If you've got, as Broad Street redeveloped with Cherry Lane, then that's a, that's a different discussion. But if a developer were to come in right now and they were to watch this, I would hope we would be giving the impression right now that we got enough multifamily. I mean, we got enough apartment complexes. We can't handle the infrastructure of any more of those.
Agree.
Agree.
Let me ask a question, because it, it kind of relates to what we, the discussion we have with water and sewer is, it's hard to know and make plans for where you're going if you don't know where you are. So, could we develop some type of, and is there some kind of tool that the planning commission and the council could have on a regular basis, almost like what we've done, the dashboard that, that we've created financially for, okay, yeah, but, but so that we could have a snapshot for where are we at this particular, any given time? Where are we with these numbers? So that, you know, we're going forward, we think we've, we've accomplished it. You know, when I step on the scales in the morning and I look at it and I say, I'm going the wrong way.
I was thinking.
Well, I'm, hey, I'm sorry. But, but, but if we don't know where we are, I'm afraid some of these decisions are so arbitrary, we go down the road or somebody calls us on the phone and says, well, is there, are y'all still appro, is there still a moratorium on apartments? How often do we get that question? You know, so, so, anyway, I, I think it would be helpful for us to have a dashboard or snapshot so that the commission and us can, can see where we are. Because one of the considerations, I appreciate the point you made, there's some consideration for allowing density for affordability and, and that, that being a caveat, a chip we keep in our pockets. So, if you want more density, then you're gonna have to have this level of price point. And, and, and I think we saw in the 2035 plan that we, we need to give a little bit more consideration, have a more intentional plan for addressing that issue. And if we know where we are and a plan comes to us and somebody says, I want to go to a higher density, then where's your price point? And, and then that could be a, a chip that we could play at that, at that point in time. But, but again, I think it's information and for your deliberative bodies to have more information, I think it's gonna be real important.
I, I gotta kind of make a comment, make sure, I mean, because I, it scares me a little bit and here's why, here's what, here's what the affordability comment, here's why it scares me. The things that were on the list for what gets you a density, you know, architecture, quality, all those things, it ain't affordability. It's more expensive. And Shane wouldn't be able to say what he said about the apartment complexes on, at the avenue, if we said, if it's more affordable, we're gonna give it to you. Because then it's gonna be a, you know, a square building with a, you know, a one-pitch roof and, you know, all deep red brick and look like prison. You know, I mean, it, it just, I, I'm afraid, look, I'm just kind of saying, I, I'm afraid of that. I get the affordability thing. I mean, I know exactly where we're, where we're coming from on that. I'm just afraid of how that sort of, you know, that really doesn't gee-haw with higher quality, et cetera, et cetera. Those two things just literally don't go together in a capitalistic system, right?
If you talk, surveying the market, if you talk to every builder and developer in this community, they're gonna tell you, even at six units per acre, which I think is our next discussion on single-family and townhomes, it is almost impossible to build a single, a new single-family house under $350,000. I mean, that's, that's how much it costs by the time you develop and you, you pay fees, all the other stuff you have to pay, that's what it costs. So, townhomes, I mean, even the townhomes we looked at the other night, those were all gonna be in the, in the low to mid 200s to the upper 200s. And, you know, I know we keep, we struggle with affordability and I don't want this to come out the wrong way. At one point, Franklin was affordable. But I guarantee you, they're not in council meetings now talking about affordable housing in Franklin, because, you know, the average house in, in Franklin's $550, $600,000. So, at some point, even if we were to strip every single regulation that we have, even if we were to strip architecture requirements, you're still not gonna change how much the piece of land costs. So, you're not gonna be able to get a home that you can, even if we went back to the Evergreen Farms days where we said all vinyl siding, siding, and you did 36-foot wide houses, you're not gonna get a home in the 300,000s now. It's just not gonna happen. So, I think it's okay, and this may not be the most political thing to say, Nashville looked at Murfreesboro 15, 20 years ago as the affordable place, that everyone drove either to Antioch, to Laverne, Smyrna, Murfreesboro. And now, affordable homes in, in, in Rutherford County, that's gonna be driving to Coffey County, to Bedford County, and to Cannon County. And that's what, if you look at the market, that's what people are doing. They're driving 30 minutes, 45 more minutes to get that affordable house. So, the only thing that, as a council and planning commission, that we are gonna have to talk about is, we can get things more affordable by allowing more density, but affordable is not gonna be getting the product down in the $100,000 anymore, unless you're going over into areas, Mitchell-Milson, Jones Boulevard, which you're seeing that more and more now where people are buying homes and they're, they're redoing those. So, that's the tough part where affordability, in my opinion, needs to be, we need to incentivize people to go into neighborhoods and say, we want you to go in and, and fix those projects up, because we're not having to add the density, because they're already there.
Look, it hurt my feelings seeing that real estate report. I mean, I was gonna tell you, the, the fact, and I brought it up in our last meeting, you know, it doesn't surprise me at all that Williamson County and Davidson County are over $600,000 a house for this year through October and that we're at 300. But what did surprise me is that we're at 300 and Wilson County is at 380. I mean, to, and, you know, to say that somebody can afford 380 in Lebanon and they can't afford it in Murfreesboro, that hurts my feelings. I'm just gonna tell you right now, because we got good stuff here. We got good parks, we got a bunch of good stuff. We're sitting in some good stuff right now. And, and so, the affordability piece, I mean, I, so, from part of this visioning, and, and look, I think, you know, this is something that we all kind of have to make some sort of a decision on as we, as we take these things into account. Do we want to be comparing ourselves to Wilson, Davidson, Williamson? Or do we want to be comparing ourselves to Bedford, Coffey, Cannon? You know, I mean, and, and I think, you know, part of that answer is gonna be we're somewhere in between, that's fine, but, I mean, which direction do you want to be going here? Do we want to have 50%? I mean, you know, and, and I, I think if you look, they just gave those statistics, but man, if you look at the, the stuff that we have come through, planning commission and council on rezonings, I, other than the other night, when I sat in the crowd, the, the five-acre deal, I mean, that's the only one of those I've seen in two years at least that's not five or better, that started at five or better.
Right.
Right? I mean, every single one of them. So, if the answer is just, well, you know, how do we incorporate that affordability? I, I don't know, but what I do know is I think if somebody's willing to pay 380 in Lebanon, I think they're willing to pay 380 in Murfreesboro. But if all we're building's 220, that's what they're gonna pay and, and that's the people that are gonna come by and the people who are in the 220 market, which, you know, that's just, we gotta make that decision.
So, so my comment on affordability is not that it has to be the average, but you have people that live here that, or that would like to live here, but they can't afford it. So, if we're never gonna build a product for them, then I agree with you, then we need to state that's what we are.
Yeah.
But, and then if we state that's what we are, then we, we got a part of this that we can't affect on the planning commission and that is, you better bring jobs in that are gonna be able to support that.
One, one other thing to, to, Rick, to think about is, when you think about Lebanon, I'm sure it's Wilson County, the data that you're looking at?
It was Wilson County, Rutherford, yeah.
So, if you pull Mount Juliet out of that, Providence and those homes that are there.
Call it Mount Juliet then. If we can't get Mount Juliet.
Because Lebanon's not the same thing as Mount Juliet and I'm not picking on Lebanon.
This is public now.
Is everyone okay with, Warren, like affordable project? We, we allowed Murfreesboro Housing Authority to do a different, a different product downtown that we, their density was doubled downtown.
Yeah, so, on my affordability, there are programs out there that developers have access to that can lower their cost to build. And I think that's part of, if they go out and get that type of program and they can lower their cost to build and that project comes in, then that should get better density than some other project.
Right. Well, and, you know, we did that, we did that two and a half years ago with Habitat for Humanity. We allowed them to do a, you know, a subdivision on Flat Rock Road, or is it, is it?
No, it was.
Oak Straff, yeah. So, if we know where we are on apartments, this really kicks back from council to planning commission. Are we okay saying that, you know, do we want to see, would we rather see seven townhomes? Or would we rather see five and a half single-family houses? Which would we rather see? Would we rather tell a developer, hey, our sewer ordinance is 3.6 units per acre, you're bringing in seven, seven units per the sewer ordinance for a townhome? But can we incentivize someone to build single-family and do that through density? Would we rather, if that mix is off, would we rather see more density for town, or for single-family than we would townhomes? Because I don't think, and I cannot remember the last time in, y'all tell me, Ken, when's the last time we've had a 12,000 or 15,000 square foot lot subdivision come in, in Murfreesboro?
Long time.
Yeah, I mean, we're, you're not gonna see 12,000, 15,000 square foot lots. You're, you're not really gonna see 10,000 square foot lots. And, and that, I mean, that's not just Murfreesboro, that's, that's all over. So, we can't, if we want to see single-family, then we're gonna have to be able to say it's okay to give a little more incentive for somebody to build single-family as opposed to building townhomes.
Yeah. For what it's worth, Thompson Lane the other night, I sent the, I sent the guy, the people a message, if they flip-flop the numbers, you know, instead of having 60 townhomes and 30 single-family detached.
Forty and 30, I think it's 70 total.
Whatever, something like, yeah, yeah. So, it was, whatever those numbers were, if it's flip-flop, where you have more single-family, then those percentages I'm talking about in those ranges, how much are we, you know, here, how much do we want to have in townhomes? How much do we want to have in single-family? You know, tho, those kinds of things. I know that the numbers are getting closer to where I, my personal vision for the city is going. So, I, I agree with more single-family.
Yeah, so, you know, that project, a great example the other night, that project the other night, 74 units. So, would you rather see rough numbers, would you rather see 60 single-family houses? Or would you rather see whatever it was, 18 single-family and 56 townhomes?
I don't remember the numbers, but I had said, you know, just flip them and I'd even.
I think, I think the other thing.
Because I think this is important for, for our planners to hear this, if we're saying we would rather see more density, which goes back to that affordable, affordability, I mean, you may be able to build a house for 350 now as opposed to 420, but is that, is that what we want to see?
I, I'll just make this comment and, you know, a lot of times we talk about green space when we're talking about single-family detached, right? So, just a traditional home that we would think of versus a townhouse. Well, part of the challenge, as things have been compressed, as you factor in land cost, building cost, 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 all these things, you know, there's more pressure for people to outlay capital, to invest capital. And so, what they're, of course, everybody's trying to do, I want the best margins I can possibly get, so how much can I push in here in order to maximize my margins? Well, that, nothing wrong with that, that's business, that's what everybody does. But I don't want us to confuse, and maybe I should be talking to Ronnie Martin here, don't want us to confuse the attractiveness of single-family detached when you've got five-foot setbacks on each side and it's, and you can't do anything with that space. And so, are we better served by allowing attached and doing something different, planning it different, changing the way we look at it to say, we're gonna have, you know, not 10 feet between houses that nobody's gonna use, it's just to make sure you can get a lawnmower through there from the, for the AC units, versus pushing these things together and setting different expectations with amenities or how the green spaces are used? Now, I think people, a lot of people would prefer to have a detached home, but some people are indifferent to that. So, anyway, I, I'm okay, whatever we do, I just don't want us to overplay the, the value of these single-family homes that have 10 feet between them.
Yeah, but I also don't want a developer walking in, trying to cram townhouses in and go, well, I need this density or I can't make a profit.
I understand.
Well, I, now, I'll just make one other comment. I remember early 90s when my uncle bought a house in, he bought a townhome in Stone Mountain, Georgia, and that was the rave then, and townhomes were being built left and right. If I roll back 20 years, all those townhomes, every one of them have turned into rentals. So, you have to be careful when you go out and you build all these townhomes.
Right.
20 years from now, those potentially are gonna be rental properties.
I, I have clients right now that are buying five doors under one roof, all at one time. It's fee simple, yes, but there's only one reason they're buying them.
But Warren, that's price point too, though. The same thing would be the case for single-family detached, it's price point.
And that's really where, if the council starts making the decision, the planning commission, to say, we want to see more single-family than we do townhomes, as opposed of having a mix of 80/20, 80% townhomes to 20% single-family, if it's the exact opposite, it's 20% to 80%. And this is really what you're seeing on small pieces of property. I mean, small pieces of property where you can't cluster, you can't do the bucket station where you have four quadrants and you, you know, a cluster in these small developments, it's, hey, across the street over here, I've got single-family and then the rest of the development's all multifamily. So, if, if we tell our planning staff, we want to incentivize and see more single-family, then that's gonna take care of the, the, the issue you're talking about on the rental side. You're not ever gonna, I mean, we can't monitor who buys.
Yeah, because there's a lot of people renting houses.
Yeah.
You know, too. But.
Is it, so is that safe to say that, as a, as a group, that we would rather see, even if there's more density, because we can't have it both ways?
More than 3.8.
More than 3.8. That we, we, density incre, we would allow a density increase if it's single-family as opposed to, to single-family attached. You know, in other words, we're, we're fine going, looking at three-point, going above the 3.6, but if you come in with a townhome development that's got nine units per acre, we're not okay with going above the seven that we've already done. We're, we would, if we were to look at two developments and one's. We would, we would, if we were to look at two developments and one's seven units townhomes and one's a five unit, single family. Then we would rather see the five unit, single family.
Yes.
Okay.
Knowing, knowing that out in the future, the more of those you allow, that you're going to affect those townhomes. Because your, your townhome allocation is not going to be available.
Right. That goes to the 30%. Now, here's, here's the, the, the next thing. Talk to a, a local engineer, where does everyone stand on? A, a good example is the Brooks Gerald Farm where Two J's Restaurant and Dunkin' Donuts is located.
Memorial.
Memorial. Um, I forget how many acres that track was, I think it's 30 acres or something like that, that when Mr. Gerald or Greta Gerald brought that through. Well, the front of that was multifamily, I mean, not multifamily, the front was commercial, highway commercial. You had a road going down, you had commercial on the right side. And then you had commercial in the middle and in the back, that's sewn multifamily, it's sewn for an apartment complex. Well, especially because of what's happening with the pandemic. Commercial property is not developing near as fast as it, it used to. So where do we stand on those pieces of property if someone wants to bring that through? To rezone from a low intense user of commercial to more of a, a more intense user to go to townhomes?
I think it would depend on what's adjacent to it. So if you're surrounded by commercial on every single side, and then you're just going to do residential in the very center, that, that there's no flow there.
From a budget impact, it's, you know, those two things are kind of the polar opposites. The, the high density residential is kind of our probably biggest loss. The commercial is probably our bigger revenue. So for that reason, I would generally oppose, I mean, that's one of the reasons I would generally oppose shifting commercial to high density. Now, commercial property that's sitting there with nothing on it, because it doesn't develop, also doesn't get a whole lot of tax revenue today. But I'm hoping that, you know, over time, that that fills in. And it may not be as fast as we wish or whatever, but that ultimately pandemic ends and we continue to grow and provide good things here. And that people will want to develop it. And I'm willing certainly to, to give things some of that time. So generally, I think I'm against, generally. It, it wouldn't mean that there weren't times that, that I would think I could be okay with it, but. I would say generally, I would not want to do it.
I, I, I would not have a huge objection, but it would be case by case. Obviously, I think as you have commercial frontage and you talk about rooftops, I know those things support each other. Are, are we talking about 250 townhomes? Are we talking about 50 townhomes? That would matter to me. Again, I, I, if it were a standalone deal by itself, commercial, and we're just putting townhouses. And nobody can walk to Two J's and eat if they wanted to do that, back to that mixed use, walkability type concept, that would matter to me. But I, I don't carte blanche say, no, I would not.
I think that's kind of why we need to, we were talking earlier today that we, as a, uh, joint boards need to meet on a regular basis. Because given the economy and how things might turn around, six months from now, we might have a totally different opinion about how. We would make these kind of decisions and the kind of information that, uh, perspective we want to give, uh, to, to staff. You know, I, I, you know, you'd have to give the context, it's like, context really tells you the whole thing. And, and our economy might turn around in six or eight months and, and we might, you know, be, uh, have a different, uh, opinion. But it's probably project specific as well, too, uh, given what's around it. So I, you know, I, it's not going to be easy to say what, what you would want. I agree with Rick that, that probably the budget impact for a high density residential is probably, well, is obviously going to be more impact on infrastructure. Roads and schools and other things that we have to, and fire departments and police annexes and all the things that we might have an impact on our budget. As opposed to a commercial development that would have more, uh, like he says, impact on our revenue side. So I, you know, you just, it, we just need to, right now, I'd, I'd be happy with where we are. What we, the comments we've already made about, uh, density. And, and leaving it, leaving that as the kind of, uh, uh, opinion of council at this point in time. But let's revisit that in a, in a quarterly or semi annually or whatever we want to do that. So we can have that kind of conversation again.
Kurt?
I'd be okay with townhouses and single family. Cause right across the street, you just got that huge apartment complex that's, uh, coming up. How many units is that? Do we know?
I think it's about 300 or 400, it's.
It's, it's massive.
Actually, it's not, yeah, it's.
It's massive.
Quite as big as I thought, actually, when I, when I remember seeing the, the numbers, but.
So say what, what would happen, like, if that developer came in and said, hey, I'm not interested in putting, I can't make the numbers work. With the multifamily and, and Darren only giving, uh, nine units per acre. So, um, I, I may, would like to bring in and make this. More of a mixed use doing townhomes and some single family as opposed to multifamily. I mean, I, I guess what we're saying is.
If you're, if you're looking at my, I mean, I, I know you guys have commented, my comment on it would be, I would be more inclined to look at it from a mixed use. I live in the area, so a mixed use would make a lot more sense for me.
Okay, so it, I mean, I think what we're telling staff is that it would be on a case by case basis. But if somebody was bringing a plan through just to say, hey, my commercial is not selling, I don't necessarily have a great vision for the property. But I want to put, you know, eight units, whatever, seven to townhome units on there. Then that may be where staff says, we're going to want to see a planned development. And to be able to get that, that density from the commercial side, it needs to be a good plan.
Keep, keep in mind, I mean, here, here's the, here's the interesting dynamic between what you just said. Is, the developer is saying, I need to do this because I need to be able to make money. If, if we're trying to treat this like a business, you don't sell stuff that you lose money on very often. And when we do this, we're just acknowledging, we have more, we have more expense in that piece of property than we do revenue. From the city's budget perspective. Okay, so it's a ying and a yang, somebody's making money on it, somebody's losing money on it. And I'm just not interested in continuing to lose money on it. And have to deal with tax increases or put somebody else in a position to deal with tax increases after I'm gone.
That's fair.
And I, I would say also, from, from my point of view, there are some strategic pockets within the city.
Us leaders.
We can, no, the other way, that we cannot do that on. Because from the future growth of the city, there may be an intersection that the developer says, we, you know, we got commercial here and we want to put multifamily on it. And from the city's infrastructure standpoint, we don't want to do that.
Right.
I think there, that, those areas from a planning commission standpoint need to be identified.
So that goes to the next slide, that's a great segue, Warren. We haven't had a lot of annexations come. You know, to us over the last while. So I, I, I don't think we can do this today. But as a planning commission and as a council, using the information that we're getting from where we have sewer. Where we have infrastructure. We talked about the heat maps. Where do we want to let staff know that we should promote growth in those areas? The example, when I met with the planning commission members, do we want growth out Bradyville, or do we want gra, growth out Halls Hill Pike? I mean, do we want to promote, we've got a nice big sewer line out there in sidewalks that got put in 25 years ago. But do we want growth out Halls Hill Pike? You know, away from people where there's jobs and people having to travel to get to services, because there's just not a lot of services there. Or do we say, we want to see Shores Road, we want to see Veterans Parkway? I mean, where are the areas as a body that we would say, we have a heat map, that we tell people? We've got infrastructure in these areas, we don't have your basin issue. Where are the areas that we say, look, we would, we would be favorable to annexing in these areas? I don't think we can solve that today, but that's something for everybody to think about on, you know, as you see from the, the planning commission side. I mean, is it, if we have a, if we have a developer that wants to come out and, you know, we put a project out on Vills Road, out in the Bradyville area that. And that was really based on affordability. But do we want to see the city grow? Out Bradyville Pike? I mean, where are the areas that we want to see and give the vision that we want the city to grow?
My two cents would be, I think there's economies of scale if we fill in the bubble. You know, if you look at the city zoning map of, of what we have surrounded, if we're filling in the core, the center of that zoning, I, I would be for that. If it's contiguous, um, especially internally or close to the, the center, I'd be for that. But adding to the bubble and growing the bubble outside, I think you got to have a real good business case to do that. Especially if you're continuing to stretch infrastructure when all we're talking about is infrastructure.
What's made this extra difficult is the capability to go out on the, whatever they call those spider legs or whatever. They have some word for it, to where you're, you know, going out a mile out the road, where the road is only annexed. And then you annex a big piece of property to develop it. So you know, the whole thing is, that's ca, you know, we can do that now. But that makes it a much more important question, right? I mean, the farther you get away, the harder it is to justify the case.
Right.
And, and you know, I think for me, it comes down to, what's the likelihood, so out Bradyville Road, what's the likelihood we get some commercial? You know, that, that the whole, if we call that area a basin, you know, what, you know, how, what's the likelihood we get mixed use in that basin? Where we have some commercial revenues coming to, to, you know, along with the rooftops. I mean, if there's both of them, I, you know, I can, I wouldn't necessarily say I don't want to grow out to the east. Cause if, you know, what, they, they build some good commercial out there that supports those, that area, we could grow that direction. A bit farther from the interstate, but that's where people want to be, it's fine with me.
All right, so that's, that's, that's not a question that we can answer today, but everyone really needs to be thinking about. And even staff, for y'all to think about areas that you could come back and bring to the council and the planning commission that said, hey, here's areas that we see as potential areas. That we feel like we can service. You know, Rucker Lane and, um, Marymont. You know, if somebody came on Moreland Lane and there's a farm out there that, that's not in the city right now, that fronts Veterans Parkway. Would we say, yeah, we'd like to see something like that brought in the city, because we built a five lane road through there. So is that an area that we say, yeah, we'd want to annex that? But then if we went past Burtonob Road, out by the quarry, past the park property, do we want to go out there? Another example we talked about is, do we really want to see any more development on Asbury Lane? Where Pretoria Falls came in, is that an area that we say? There's not any chance that road is going to be developed? So do we want to see more development out in, in that area? That's really the, the question. All right, how about the next one? I think this is the last one. The, the whole reason of having this today really stemmed off of three weeks ago on watching us have these discussions out there. And, you know, we, we're not involved in day to day operations, but if staff is confused on what direction that the council and the planning commission want to go. Then we can't get a good product that comes to us, or y'all are going to be sending us stuff that we say, why the heck did that, how did the heck did that get here? And then what's going to end up happening, sitting in y'all's shoes? Then you start looking to go, well, man, I'm wasting my time sitting here, that I'm working as hard as I work on these projects. And every time I sit at the city council, then they just either vote it down or kick it back. So that was one of the reasons to do this, because I don't want y'all to feel like you're, you're wasting your, your time. But how do we want, in the likely, or in the event that staff works with a developer? Like the plan that we had a couple Thursday nights ago, or three Thursday nights ago. You know, it's my understanding that finally the developer said, I, this is all I'm going to do. Take it to planning commission, take it to city council. How do you want staff to communicate with the two, with, with your body? If they cannot recommend that project?
One of the things that I always listen for in our, in our meetings, I'm not sure if this question was directed over here.
Yeah, now it's to everybody.
I'm going to take the opportunity to answer, uh, is, um, I always listen for, files are generally in good order. Or the file is generally not, not in good order. Uh, I believe that, that provides a lot of insight to our commission on whether or not the staff believes that's a, that's a, a good project to bring through or not. So I always pay heavy attention to that whenever I'm, uh, listening to the staff report. And that helps me out a lot. So I go off that, I go a lot off that.
It would be helpful to have information sooner. I mean, you can't read every word of every report leading up to every meeting. So is there a way to get a summary or a little bit more of a breakdown? Because I'll put more effort if I know there's some issues forthcoming. And I don't want to hear about it at the start of the meeting. I need to hear about it weeks before the meeting so that I can have more time to give it more attention. I don't know what the options are.
That's a good, that's a great, that's a great question, Jeff.
Maybe just add a little, little commentary on that. The, the planning commission, uh, calendar allows us to have an afternoon meeting. We've really tried to trim down the Platts and Plans that make it onto that agenda. With this, with the very direct purpose of trying to spend more time in the workshop setting, reviewing new business. And so that, that was the original intent of that meeting structure. We're trying to get back to that. I think what we would ask for is, um, uh, you know, plan commission's engagement at that time. We're really looking for some nods up and down or some, you know, some interaction. And, and our, our staff will be prepared to also give you the opportunities, uh, borrowing a Greg McKnight phrase here. Give you the opportunities that that project faces, uh, based on staff's review of it to that point. So I think the workshop setting, um, is, is where we set the stage for that project moving forward. It's also where the planning commission can help send us a, a, a message back to the development team. You know, and, and it's okay, it's okay at that point to offer a comment about, about the project. That's what the, the time is for. That project's coming back to you likely in two to three weeks at a public hearing. And so then you are going to be put on the spot to have an opinion on it up or down. But the, the workshop setting, I think, is, is really where we need to maybe do that. And, and give you some more opportunity, information in that meeting and, and leading up to that meeting, uh, to maybe deal with some of those, uh, questions. And, and quite honestly, the easy ones are easy and the hard ones are hard, and it'll continue to be that way. And, and what you, you'll hear from staff, we're going to, we're going to try to make sure you understand that we're looking at a hard one when it's hard. And, um, and, and the easy ones will, will continue to be, uh, easy.
And I think when, when the staff is not recommending the project. Clearly, if we can know about that ahead of time, so that we can digest what really is wrong with the project. Cause we've had, I, I know in the last year, we've had some cases where the staff didn't recommend the project. But when we were looking at it, we didn't find reasons why we would disapprove, so we approved the project. But if we'd have known well ahead of time that, hey, you know what, the staff has not recommended it and here's why. And before we get to the meeting, because it's hard to digest that in the meeting. Trying to read through all the papers, read through it the day before, a couple of days before. If we know a week or two ahead of time, we know the key, you need to pay attention to this and you need to understand it in detail, that would definitely help us.
I've grappled, I've grappled, I think, with what some of the essence of this question is for, since I started on council. Because I've always had this kind of, know, knowing that there's part of me that I need to rely on people who are professional planners to say, is this a good project or is it not? Right? I mean, to the other extent, I don't, I, I've hesitated, even though I've done it, I'm pointing at Matthew, I've done it to him. Only a small handful of times where, you know, you're sitting there at the council meeting and I just need to ask, Matthew? Do you think it's a good project? Or do you think it's not a good project, period, you know, for the city of Murfreesboro? And so I don't know, you know, we do already get, I know in our package at the coun, at the council level, we get that cover letter, you know, that kind of outlines what the project is and all that. I mean, if there were some, I mean, if there was a section of that where, where planning staff documented the opportunities. You know, like, you know, hey, look, we, we kind of think, you know, we're not necessarily saying we reject this. But here's the things that we think are lacking, short, whatever you want. we think are lacking, short, whatever you want to call it, you know, that obviously I think would be helpful, especially just to get it from a professional opinion and we can absorb that and say, you know what, I see that it's short, you know, it's an orange building, but we think it fits for that spot and we're going to go on with it, you know? So.
I think that adds on to Mr. Sacklet's red, white and green, or red, yellow and green thing.
Yeah.
Is if we got the same red, yellow and green markers at planning as we did at city, in city council both, then we can go down through there and go, oh, we got two yellows. We need to look at what's going on with these yellows before we really look at it.
And it really helps give, give direction to our planners from the standpoint to say, okay, here are the things that they see as caution lights. And when the Planning Commission looks at those and the council looks at those and they say, those are not real caution lights to us, you know, and I'm throwing an example. Look, it, it doesn't matter to us that you have to have two steps up in and have to have an 18 inch slab as opposed, or a 22 inch slab as opposed to a 18 inch slab. Then I think that's the things that, you know, we're not going to be able to hit all those, but as a, as a planning body, we can then let them know as those projects come to them, the next time a project comes, they're like, hey, the city council and the Planning Commission really don't worry about those items. So I'm not going to ask the developer to raise their slab to get two steps going into a house because I'm, we're just not worried about that. And that may be the things forward that planners give their input on those and then, you know, the governing bodies then say, okay, yeah, that's, I appreciate you letting us know that, but, you know, as for me, that's not a big issue. And then that, that gives that direction moving, moving forward.
Well, I would definitely like support, information and opinions from the professionals. I mean, if that's what you're asking, I would say I definitely want their opinion on it.
I remember Curry Peacock was my urban planning developer, teacher at MPSU, and his comment was reasonable expectations, that's what planning is about. Reasonable expectations for those making an investment and for existing property owners. And this, what we're talking about is a dance. I mean, it, you know, it's figuring out how to move together with the governing bodies, the people wanting to make expect, spend money and a community that has a vision for what they want to be. And, you know, sometimes, like Sam says, the easy dance is easy, but we're sometimes looking like a freshman dance, you know, freshman high school dance. We're odd in trying to figure out how to move together and, and to understand how to respond to each other. So what I would, you know, I think we're not taking advantage of the resources sometimes that we have, because I know when it's, I know it's something difficult that's going to come before council, I'll go back and listen to the Planning Commission meeting, the public comments. If I don't have an opportunity to do that, I at least read the minutes from your Planning Commission meetings to kind of see, okay, who, what were the questions raised by the public? What were the questions raised by you? And is, do I feel like they were given due consideration in making the decision? I think, again, part of the problem is we do need to rely upon people who have the day-to-day experience, planners that, that kind of understand how this dance is supposed to go and provide this opportunity for staff comments a little more clearly in the documentation that comes up the chain, that these are staff comments. And, and learn how to say them, because I know you don't want to cut the legs off of the developer, you want to be supportive of them, but, but to be sure that you have communicated staff has your concerns about the projects going forward. And that in the documentation, Planning Commission and City Council can go to that section and say, oh, these are the considerations that the professional staff had. And if, if they were addressed, I would love to hear not just the questions that were raised, because I know you do a lot of negotiation, you know, because of the questions that are raised at planning before they come to us. So I'd like to know the history of how they addressed them or they ignored them.
How the dance rehearsed.
Yeah, how the rehearsal went, you know, where we're sitting on each other's toes the whole time? You know, I'd like to know how it worked, you know, I'd like to know some of the history because then you can get some clarity as to whether they have effectively addressed the concerns. And, and you can find it, I mean, in the last project that came forward, I, I think I understood, you know, but I had to kind of dig for it. I felt like in the, in the minutes and in the, in the public comments that were made during the Planning Commission meeting, just a little more clarity and maybe a clearer protocol so that, you know, you go directly to staff comments or something when you're trying to figure out, okay, what were your concerns that they addressed? What were your concerns that they didn't address? And, and then, and then from your, as it passes through your deliberative body, did they answer all of your questions or did they ignore them? And then it comes up to us and I can go to that section and find out exactly what was addressed and what wasn't addressed. And then we can make ultimately, I think at our level, when it's the final, you know, watch, you know, we're on the watchtower saying it's either a go or it's not, we'll make a better decision and feel like we've done it with enough information to go forward.
So I think sum up maybe two things. We've got, I hope we've, Sam looking at y'all and Greg, that we've given y'all maybe some things to sit down with, with your planners and development team to really talk about. But the one thing I don't want us to forget, two areas, North Highland and Manny Avenue. You know, I think the total number, the total number that we put into Manny Avenue by the time you figured drainage and everything, I think it was around $10 million. And we've just not had that much development in Manny Avenue over the last 12 or 15 years. And then, you know, we did the North Highland study and besides really two governmental projects, the, the police headquarters and Murfreesboro Housing Authority, there's not been a lot of development in that area. So I think what I would say to our planning team, let's don't forget that, you know, the first, the first person who busts through the wall sometimes has to be able to, to take that chance. And so if we've, you know, it's great to have the best laid out plan in the world, but if nobody uses that plan and we can't get any activity in that area, then that may be where we look and say, okay, we're going to major on the major on this one, but we're going to minor on the minors on some of the other stuff. And that way, the first person may get a little bit of leniency to be able to get a project moving along to kick an area off. But then, as we start going through, the more activity breeds activity, that may be something that's, you know, a little different. And then the last thing, if y'all will summarize up what you think y'all have heard, so all of our planning team, you know, when y'all get together, if you'll summarize back to the Planning Commission, to the council, this is what we think we, we heard from y'all. And then we can all look at that to say, yes, that's what you heard. And that way, there's no ambiguity on where we think everybody needs to head. And then that may mean on some projects that come to the council or to the Planning Commission, specifically the council, you know, it may just have to be some things that we look at and we just agree to disagree on and we, you know, the entire council says, here's the direction we're, we're telling the planning staff to go. And that way, we don't feel like that we're, you know, going in circles, I mean, our staff's going in circles.
Hey Darren, could you flip one more side?
Sure.
There's a couple of other questions, and I think the best way maybe to do this is to send this out as a survey and get more specific feedback from Planning Commission and council, some of the questions that we have here. Some of it, I think was answered today and some of the communications will come back, but these are a little more specific questions. So we'll, we'll go ahead and send those out and then when you get a chance in writing to send back any more specifics that you'd have in answering those questions, that would help, help too in the communication process.
Do we have anything else?
May I have a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm trying to see how I'm going to say this. I'm really saddened today as I listened to our discussion on affordable housing, because it seems like today we are seemingly squeezing out a large portion of our city of people who can't, will not be able to afford, by our definition, affordable houses here in Murfreesboro. You know, I'm told that these 350 plus homes that are being built and are sold, some of them are already sold before completion. And, and that's great, that is great. But still, in my opinion, somewhere we're going to need to address affordable housing for everyone. You know, we're collecting the tax dollars where these people, from these people, and we need to be more accommodating. If not, I'm really afraid that our city is going to boil down to a city of the haves and the have-nots. And that's not, that's not the Christian way. We need to start measuring more on the minor in our city. Now, we need to put a squeeze on getting more industries in here where we can get more jobs for these people. It's not that they are lazy, don't want to work, can't afford a home, they have no jobs. So we need to put some pressure on more jobs coming into Murfreesboro. I'm not looking for any comments on what I'm saying, Mayor and Council, this is just how I feel and this is just not the Christian way. I was just glancing what Mr. Tindall just put up and he said desired amenity, and we're talking about dog parks, play fields, pavilions, residential development. But we have to major more on the whole city. And so that's just what I wanted to say, I don't need a comment.
All right, Alan, I'm going to give you a comment. I mean, you know, look, it's, I think something that's, you got to kind of think about and what you need, what I would ask you to incorporate into what you just said is, what percentage of the city should fit what you're saying? So do you think, you think we should give away every house for free for everybody that's in the city because that's the Christian way?
Mr. LaLance.
I mean, you know, but don't.
You didn't hear me say give away anything. You didn't hear me say that.
You say affordable.
All I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, this is a Bible belt area of our nation, and I'm saying that we have to accommodate these people somehow. You know, the average home of our city council people is 250,000 plus. And, and that's fine, and plus, that's fine. And sometimes when we get in a certain position, that's all we know. And I'm going to give you a good example of what I'm talking about. I think, yeah, it's a much, especially since this pandemic, it's a much more, it's a larger increase. I may have said this before, where I live, I have never seen a homeless person walk in my neighborhood. I went on State Street where I was born and raised next to Scales and Sun Spinning Home, sat on the porch for an hour and I saw six. So what I'm saying is, we have to be open to our whole city.
What percentage?
And I'm not saying give anything away. I'm not saying that, I'm saying, but we got to accommodate.
Well, what percentage, if, if, if it's not 100%, what percent is agreeable to you that we, that you feel like we would have focused on affordable housing? Like if, so I mean, I guess what I'm trying to say is, if you think apartments are affordable housing and we've already got 33%, what percent do you think we need to go to, to focus on affordable housing? I, I mean, it's a, because we got to have a little bit of everything, right? I mean, that's the reality. I'm, I'm.
And that's the point I'm making, we don't have a little bit of everything. The pull-up getting.
I guess I would beg to differ. I mean, I, I don't agree with that. And so we can deal with this at another time, but I, you know, you start talking about being more Christian than somebody else or something like that, and this starts to go a different direction. And I, you know, I mean, I, maybe me and you just need to have a conversation, but I'm, you know, at some level, you address it, we try to address it, and, and I, I would not think that, you know, that you could say, we haven't addressed it in this town, is my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think the best thing to do, what we've learned going through all this, as much as we like to think that the government can put rules and regulations and that we can determine certain things, we just can't determine what the market's going to do. I don't think, you know, you look at Nashville's, what Nashville's selling, Rick, I think that number was like 650. I mean, you can't even buy an Airbnb downtown for, you know, 750 to 790 is what 2,000 square feet is. So there's some of it that, Manon, I agree, we need to have that discussion in affordability and, you know, maybe that's Murfreesboro Housing Authority, and I don't ever want to get to where I'm saying that we don't need to have affordable product, but we also can't forget that 15 years ago, people were saying, you need to drive to Murfreesboro to buy a cheap house. I mean, that's, that's where people would say. And so I think that maybe the, the question is, how do we partner with other communities to help be enabled to provide that? Because I mean, sheer economics, a piece of land in, in Woodbury is going to be cheaper than a piece of land in Murfreesboro. And, and that's really what we're going to have to try to work through. So that'll be a, Manon, I appreciate that, that'll be, I think, a discussion to have at a, as we start going through land use, that'll be the discussion to talk about. So I appreciate everybody coming, we're, we're moving on two hours and 45 minutes. So staff, if y'all send us your comments on what y'all have heard, I think that'll help all of us to be able to process that. And Craig, I hate to do this to Aaron Tucker, but I don't think anybody, you know, we've got a lot of information she sent last night, I read through, but I wouldn't mind reading through it again. So sorry, Aaron.
No, just kind of, if y'all just want to send me questions, if you have anything, you know, I think they're important.
Yeah, and.
We'll circulate questions and answers if they come in.
Yesterday was Kurt Wade's birthday.
What are you, 80?
Yesterday.
Did you have your AARP card yet?
I did.
And I, I don't, I don't know if y'all have seen, I, I don't ever follow it, but there's a thing on Dear Murfreesboro on, if y'all have not, if y'all have not seen on Instagram, the Dear Murfreesboro, and they did, if the Murfreesboro City Council were to make a movie, and so they put Eddie, Eddie's gone, but Eddie was on there. But if y'all saw who that they compared Kurt to, I, I think that would be fitting on his birthday. So anyway, with that, we'll.
They'll get you.
Yeah, all right. We'll stand adjourned.